Honorable members, please take your seats. We are about to commence proceedings. It's my pleasure to welcome you to the meeting of the Committee of the House. Following the request of the House, we invited three institutions as part of the free-laying consultations to discuss with us the impending CI, which is in a draft form the EC intends to present to the House. Last week there was an attempt which did not succeed and we decided to continue today. And so the three institutions are here. Honorable member, please, you either listen to me or I listen to you. The Ministry of Finance is led by the Minister himself with his deputies and I also see the Chief Director of the Ministry. So the Ministry is well represented. The Electoral Commission is led by the Chairperson herself and we have the Deputy Chair in attendance. We have the Director of the Commission Electoral Services. We have the Head of Procurement and we also have a Deputy Director together with a Personal Assistant to the Chairperson. We have from the National Identification Authority the Executive Secretary. He leads a large team here. We have with him the Executive Assistant to the Executive Secretary. We have the Actuarial Analyst. We have the Head of Operations. The Deputy Head of Finance. The Principal Officer Corporate Affairs. We have another Head of Operations and then Portfolio Management Head and then the Chief Operating Officer. The operations, they are different. There is one that is IMS and there is one that is NIA. That is the overall. So they are all here who listen to them and they will also listen to us who try and find solutions to the differences. And then the Committee of the House will report to Plenary. I want to invite the leaders of the three to join me here and we'll start by calling on the Electoral Commission. Since they have the draft instrument, even though they submit some to the Parliament, they will have to set the ball ruling and then from there we can move to the other institutions after that we listen to members. So Electoral Commission Chairperson, may you with your knowledge of the situation focus in your presentation on the differences so that we see how we can resolve that one within the shortest possible time. Honorable members, I want to plead with you to please give us your ears. We are not looking for your mouths. We want your ears. Please, I'm taking note of all those making noise and I'll apply the king. Yes, Chairperson, you may go on now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, right, honorable Speaker of Parliament, honorable Majority Leader, honorable Minority Leader, the Leadership of the House, honorable Members of Parliament, friends of the media, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I thank the good Lord for making it possible for my team and I to be here this afternoon. To God be all the glory. To God be all the glory. It is an honor to be here representing the Electoral Commission of Ghana and my team and I are pleased that we have been invited to share our views on the draft CI. That is a subject matter of our discussion today as well as to answer any questions that may ensue. Right, honorable Speaker, as you may be aware, I was out of the jurisdiction at the time when the invitation was received from Parliament. I was attending to an invitation by the Ekonec for a peer exchange and election observer mission in Nigeria when your invitation to the Commission was received. Indeed, your letter was received on Wednesday, the 22nd of February, requesting for a meeting the following day, that is Thursday, the 23rd of February 2023. In fact, had I been aware of the meeting, I would have rescheduled the mission. In this vein, I'd like to use this opportunity, Mr. Speaker, to correct the erroneous impression that I have failed to honor the invitation of Parliament. For the record, this is the third time the Electoral Commission has been invited to the meeting of the whole House. The first was immediately preceding the 2020 election and I led my team and presented a report on our readiness for the election. The second was the meeting of last week when I was out of the jurisdiction attending to an invitation by the Ekonec. Today marks the third time we have received an invitation to address the full House and I'm here in my capacity as God servant and the Chairperson of the Electoral Commission. I'm here in my capacity as God servant and the Chairperson of the Electoral Commission to lead my team and to present to lead my team and to present our justification for the draft CI, which is a subject matter of our deliberations today. Mr. Speaker, the CI before Parliament seeks to promote the continuous registration of voters and advocates for an all-year-round registration of eligible voters at the district offices of the Electoral Commission. It is a clear departure from the previous system where the voters' registration was done for a limited period. Like its name, under the limited voters' registration exercise, the registration of new voters was only conducted for a limited period. It was not all year round. As such, persons who turned 18 years old after the registration period as well as persons who had not previously registered to vote could not do so when the time set aside for the limited registration, usually three to four weeks elapsed. Under our new CI, anyone who is eligible to vote can simply walk into any of our district offices in the district where he or she intends to vote and register to vote. As indicated, this is a far departure from the previous limited registration exercise where a person could not register, where a person who could not register had to wait for the next round of the limited registration exercise before he or she could be registered to vote. Honorable members, permit me to restate that the main advantage of the continuous registration exercise is that potential voters can register at any time of their choosing once the exercise begins. Interested persons who had not previously or who have not previously registered and qualified to vote will be able to register at their leisure and with ease because it will be an all-year-round activity. As such, applicants will not be confronted with the long queues and frustrated crowds and possible conflicts that may lead to violence. We are equally confident that the continuous registration exercise will minimize the busing of prospective applicants to the registration centers and thereby lead to an orderly, conflict-free process. I must add, honorable Members of Parliament, that for the first time in our history, we are mainstreaming the continuous registration of voters as part of our regular activities. As such, our officers in the field will be fully engaged all year round. Mr. Speaker, another significant feature of this draft constitutional instrument is the proposal to adopt the Ghana card as the sole source of identification for any person who wishes to register as a voter. This implies that the Garanta system, which heathertwo allowed a registered voter to vouch for the citizenship and age of prospective applicants will no longer be relied upon as part of our registration exercise. A reason is that over the years, the Garanta system has presented us with several challenges. Unfortunately, we were unable to discard it much earlier due to the absence of a national identification card such as the one issued by the NIA. The challenges with the Garanta system are too many. First of all, it opens the door for registered voters or Garanta contractors to guarantee and vouch for persons who are less than 18 years old. Secondly, it allows these guarantors to vouch for persons who are not citizens of Ghana. Such unqualified persons, usually minors and foreigners, use the door, the Garanta system, to try to get onto our register. Mr. Speaker, it is important to note that to read the register of minors and foreigners in the year 2020, the Electoral Commission established the District Registration Review Committees, which worked for several days and weeks in all districts to expound the names of minors and foreigners from the register. We were able to successfully expound close to 40,000 minors and foreigners from the register during the registration exercise. It has been argued that this number is not significant, but we beg to differ and we refute the argument and states that one unqualified person on our rule is one too many. In short, it is possible to have these 40,000 legal persons determine the future of our dear country and collectively, we must not allow this. I must add that the work of the District Registration Review Committee came at a huge cost to the nation. It was unnecessary, wasteful and time-consuming. As a country, we should not continue along this route. Truth be told, Mr. Speaker, the Garanta system was not the best under any circumstances, but we did not have other options since a significant number of persons eligible to register did not possess the Ghana card at the time of registration in 2020. Even then, we had some 10 million Ghanaians using the Ghana card to back their citizenship in 2020. Today, we are reliably informed that some 16 million Ghanaians in possession of the Ghana card and with NIA's assurance today we are reliably informed that 16 million Ghanaians are in possession of the Ghana card and with NIA's assurance that it will print and distribute the remaining cards to registrants in a matter of weeks, we do not believe that we would be disenfranchising persons by enforcing the policy requirement of using the Ghana card to prove one's eligibility. The use of the Ghana card as the sole means of identification, Mr. Speaker, will prevent foreigners and minors from getting onto our voters' register. More especially, it will prevent unqualified more especially, it will prevent unqualified persons more especially, it will prevent unqualified persons from influencing our elections and having a say as to who should govern our country. This is an issue that borders on the sovereignty of our nation. Simply put, only eligible Ghanaians must be entitled to vote. And we call on our honorable members to support our efforts to prevent foreigners and minors from getting onto our electoral rule. Honorable members, using the Ghana card as the main source document for the continuous registration, by using the Ghana card as the main source of documentation for the continuous registration, the Electoral Commission will be conforming to the legislative instrument passed by Parliament, namely the National Identity Register Regulations 2011, Legislative Instrument 2111. Regulation 7.1 states that a national identity card issued to an individual shall be used for a number of transactions where identification is required. Indeed, one of the mandatory transactions stated in Regulation 7.1 is the registration of voters. As such, Parliament by its own assent legitimized the Ghana card as the sole document to prove one's citizenship. Mr. Speaker, as mentioned earlier, although the Ghana card was not the only required document to prove a person's eligibility in 2020, at the end of the exercise, over 60% or about 10 million of registered voters use the Ghana card as the main source of identification. This means that two years ago, some 10 million Ghanaians registered with the Ghana card. Today, we are reliably informed that over 16 million Ghanaians have been issued with the Ghana card and that about 17 million Ghanaians in total have registered for the Ghana card. On the strength of these numbers, we are confident that the 1.5 million applicants we are expecting to register by the end of 2013 are likely to already possess the Ghana card. Relying on the 2021 Census Report, Mr. Speaker, relying on the 2021 Census Report and per our own estimates, we are likely to register between 450,000 and 550,000 Ghanaians every year. We believe that the 17 million people that the NIA has registered, we believe that of the 17 million persons that the NIA has registered, it is likely that the 450 we believe, Mr. Speaker, that of the 17 million persons that the NIA has registered, it is highly probable that the 450 to 550 persons we intend to register annually already have the card as we speak. Mr. Speaker, with the NIA assurance that it will commence its card issuance in a matter of weeks, we encourage those who do not have the card to begin the process of acquiring the card to enable them to register as voters. The NIA has its registration centers across the districts and the regional capitals and therefore accessing their facilities will not be a challenge. Additionally, since the card is acquired at the age of 15, we encourage any Ghanaian who will turn 18 in 2023 and 2024 and who is interested in voting in the country's election to visit the nearest NIA registration center and register for the Ghana card to enable him or her also register as a voter when he or she becomes eligible. It is important to note that all those who registered in 2020 are not part of this registration exercise because all their details, including their biometric features, are intact. This registration is for those who did not take part in the 2020 registration exercise and for those who turned who have turned 18 years since the last voters' registration exercise in 2020. As an institution, the Electoral Commission remains committed to reforms aimed at strengthening the integrity of its processes. We believe that the elimination of the Garanta system from our registration process will be a catalyst for a further deepening of the integrity and credibility of our register and ultimately our elections as a whole. Reforms instituted by the Commission over the years, Mr. Speaker, have aimed at strengthening and tightening our electoral process and have ensured its credibility and integrity. In 2012, for instance, we replaced our manual voters' register with a biometric register. This engendered confidence and trust in our register and in our electoral process as a whole. Ahead of the 2020 election, we introduced the facial recognition function in addition to the fingerprint verification. This ensured that over 99% of voters were electronically verified. Similarly, Mr. Speaker, the adoption of transparent boxes instead of opaque boxes, the issuance of photo ID cards instead of tampered ID cards and the removal of the names of those who enrolled on our register using the National Health Insurance Card are all parts of reforms that have tightened and strengthened our processes and ensured the credibility of our elections. Today, Ghana can boast of a transparent and credible elections because of Mr. Speaker, today Ghana can boast of transparent and credible elections. Mr. Speaker, today Ghana can boast of transparent and credible elections because of the incremental reforms that have been implemented. Indeed, our electoral process is at par with that of the most advanced democracies in the world. Honorable members, it is in this vein that we urge you to support the decision of the EC to rely on the Ghana card as the main source of identification for those who wish to register as voters. Our country has evolved and it is important that our electoral processes also evolve to meet the exigencies of the times. Permit me to state again that in 1992, when we had no ID card, we adopted the Garanta system. Today, 30 years on, we cannot continue to rely on a system that is fraught with challenges. So when we have a credible system in the for identification card. Mr. Speaker, before I end, that this constitutional instrument and its provisions are not aimed at eligible Ghanaians. The continuous registration process, on the contrary, will be inclusive and participatory. It will make it possible to capture all those who would otherwise have been excluded in a limited registration exercise. The continuous registration exercise, Mr. Speaker, unlike the previous limited registration exercises, will be continuous, like its name states. As such, anyone who has a Ghana card can simply walk into any of our offices and get registered. The exercise is not periodic or a limited one that could lead to disenfranchising persons who do not possess the Ghana card. It is an all-year-round activity. As such, a person who does not have the Ghana card today can acquire it tomorrow and simply walk into a district office where he or she intends to vote and register. Mr. Speaker, it is important to rehash that the use of the Ghana card as the sole means of identification will ensure and guarantee the credibility and integrity of our register and our elections. It will prevent the enrollment of minors on the register. It will prevent foreigners from being registered to vote and it will eliminate the Garanta system which is prone to abuse and which promotes prone to abuse and which promotes conflict and violence. Additionally, it will lead, it will prevent costly, tedious follow-up exercises by the district registration review committees established nationwide. Finally, Mr Speaker, by using the Ghana card as the sole source of identification, the EC will be conforming to Regulation 7.1 of the legal instrument passed by parliament, the National Identity Register Regulations LI 2111, which states that the national identity card shall be used for a number of transactions where identification is required, including the registration of voters. Mr Speaker, the NIA has assured us that as of today, it has received some money to enable it to initiate the printing of cards and the registration of voters. We are reliably informed that the NIA has over three, about 3.5 million blank cards in Ghana in a bonded warehouse. We are also reliably informed that monies have been released and more funds are in the process of being released. With this assurance coupled with the fact that, like the Electoral Commission, the NIA has offices in all the districts and regions, we are confident that our continuous registration exercise will be inclusive, participatory, and robust. We are confident that anybody who qualifies to register will have the opportunity to do so if they so wish. On our part, as the institution mandated by the 1992 Republican Constitution to compile the register of voters and to revise it at such intervals as may be determined by law, everything in our power to register all qualified applicants who wish to register as voters. Our goal is to ensure that no one is left behind. As you may be already aware, or as you know, the EC has a track record in this regard. In 2020, in 2020, despite concerns raised by the sections of the society that the registration exercise will not be successful, the EC registered over seventeen million persons in thirty-eight days in a COVID-19 pandemic and during a registration season. Mr Speaker, as you know, the EC has a...
Honorable members. Fortunately, fortunately, you are known faces, known faces. So I've taken note of all of you. Honorable Dominic Nitte-Wold. Please, you are a minister, please.
Mr Speaker, I am protesting. You cannot invite someone to your house, you can't invite someone to your house and report a blessing. It's wrong. Mr Speaker, why?
Honorable, honorable Mutala Mohammed. Honorable Mutala Mohammed. It has long been ruled in this house that the use of the word shame, shame is unparliamentary. Honorable members, honorable members, the guests we have here are here in answer to an invitation by this house. The best we can do is to listen to them. At the end of the day, you've given the opportunity to ask questions. Again, honorable Mutala Mohammed, I call on you to withdraw the shame, shame. Yes, honorable member, you may go on.
Mr Speaker, Mr Speaker, Mr Speaker, Mr Speaker, if you direct me to do anything, I'll do that, but I want clarification from you, that if I didn't speak into the mic, is it, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Why are you shouting?
This is not a house of emotions. This is a house of records. It is not a house of shouting, and we are all here, and that is why I want the speaker's direction.
Yes.
Into the mic. It doesn't become, it doesn't become a statement that is made on record. So if I'm, so I want your, I want, I want your direction. But if it is that I'm withdrawing something that is not captured as a recorded statement I have made, then I do so because you are the speaker and you have directed me to do so. But you all know that any statement that is made not on the mic, it is not an official statement that is made.
I certainly so.
So if you're asking me to withdraw a statement which was not made in the mic, I would want your direction. So I, so Mr Speaker, I am withdrawing that statement even though it was not captured as an official statement because you are the speaker and you have directed me to do so, out of respect, I think, and not out of people's duty.
Honorable members, honorable members, we are in a committee meeting. We are not at plenary. We are at a committee meeting, and it's a meeting of the committee of the whole. So it's not official records. What we do at the committee meeting is to take minutes. Committee meetings, you don't have to use mic at committee meetings. I can listen to everyone here without the mic, and even though you did not use the mic, I heard you. So you don't have to talk about use of mic. And you have withdrawn the statement. Please, let's listen to each other. There's enough time for you to raise the issues. Again, again, please, particularly when you are dealing with the fairer side. All of us is incumbent on us to do all we can to encourage more women to participate in decision-making in this country. All of us, all of us. Now, let's listen to the chairperson of the Electoral Commission. You may continue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Speaker. Honorable members, as you may be aware, or as you may know, the EC has a proven track record in this, in the registration of voters. In 2020, despite concerns raised by sections of the society that the registration exercise will not be successful, the Electoral Commission registered over seventeen million persons in thirty-one days during the COVID-19 pandemic and during the rainy season. This figure represents fifty-five percent of our total population of thirty-one million, a figure that meets international standards for registration. Indeed, with the exception of Cape Verde, with a six-hundred-thousand, we have the highest number of registrants in West Africa. I must add that it was a seamless and inclusive process, and no one was left out. Yes, we can. To enhance the transparency of our registration process, the political parties may have their agents at the registration centers. Additionally, the Commission will regularly update the citizenry and the political parties about the number of registrants at each district office. Mr Speaker, I wish to emphasize that the Ghana card will not be used to vote in the 2024 election. The Ghana card is only a requirement to register as a voter. Once you present your Ghana card and successfully register as a voter, you will be issued with a voter's identification card, which bears the code of your region, your district, your electoral area, and the name of your polling station. The Ghana card does not have these features, and therefore it will not be used to vote in the 2024 general election. In conclusion, we wish to state that in the exercise of our mandate, we are mindful of Article forty-two, which enjoins, Article forty-two of the Constitution, which enjoins us to register Ghanaians who are eighteen years and above and who are of sound mind. We do not intend to disenfranchise persons who qualify to vote. It is in our interest to register them. It will be an antithesis to deny any Ghanaian the right to. However, we are, we equally have the responsibility to ensure that only qualified Ghanaians are found in the voters' register. We owe this responsibility to Ghanaians, and we will work to uphold that. Mr Speaker, honorable members of this honorable house, we are grateful for your time and attention. May God bless our homeland Ghana and make our nation great and strong. Thank you very much, Mr Speaker.
Honorable members, I want to plead with all of you to take note of the points that she has raised. At the appropriate time, we'll allow members to ask questions, raise queries, and then they will respond. We are guided generally by the rules of the House, and so I will invite the National Identification Authority to give us the presentation because in her submissions, she made copious references to the National Identification Authority, some assurances and others. Then after that, the Minister of Finance will come in, and I'll open the floor up for members to make comments. With your kind permission, I'll join you there because I also want to see the presentation. Yes, Deputy Manwatu Wip.
Mr Speaker, I was just going to make an appeal. If while the NIA, who are doing their presentation, if the presentation or the briefing just done by the chairperson of the Electoral Commission, copies can be made to the leaders.
Yes, yes, definitely we'll get a copy of her presentation. It will be part of the report which will be submitted to this House. So please, that will be done.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. Mr Speaker, as always been done at a committee level, I think it will be appropriate if the chairperson can share her presentation with us, at least with the leaders, so we can make references when we are contributing to portions of the speech.
Honorable Leader, we have taken a copy of her presentation. It is our duty to make copies available to members. Which we are going to do, but it takes time. They have to go and make photocopies. Please, that's what is being done. It's not available now. We have to make the copies and bring. If you allow the chairperson to leave September, that's the end of the meeting. Yes. Uh... Yes, I, I will join you there and then Prof will make the presentation. I'm sure the chairperson will also have to at least view what is happening. Except Prof himself, who has his laptop in front of him. The rest of us will join you so that we can all observe and learn from the presentation.
Right, right honorable speaker, honorable Majority Leader, honorable Minority Leader, honorable Members of Parliament, friends of the media, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I take it again. Right honorable speaker, honorable Majority Leader, honorable Minority Leader, honorable Members of Parliament, friends of the media, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the governing board of the National Identification Authority and the management and staff of NIA, I bring you warm greetings and have the honor to make it into this honorable house on the Ghana Card Project, on the National Identification System Project being implemented by the National Identification Authority and its technical partners, Identity Management Systems Limited, a subsidiary of the Margens Group of Companies. Right honorable speaker, I will attempt to touch on the mandate of the NIA, some of the contractual and operational framework that governs our work, and the registration statistics as at the nineteenth of February twenty twenty-three, being last week Sunday. And I will also highlight the centrality of the role of a verification system platform that we have created in the work of the NIA in order to enhance data harmonization and integration and to ensure that user agencies such as the Electoral Commission and the Social Security and National Insurance Trust and other agencies are able to rely on the data provided by NIA to serve their diverse statutory purposes. Right honorable speaker, the mandate, just by way of a quick reminder, the mandate of the National Identification Authority is broken down into five prongs. First is to register all Ghanaians living in Ghana and abroad, as well as all foreigners who are permanently resident in Ghana, defined by law as those living here for ninety days or longer and who are not diplomats or the representatives of international non-governmental organizations. Our duty is also to issue the citizens of Ghana and such qualified foreigners with national identity cards, commonly known as a Ghana card. Third, it is our mandate to create and maintain a national identity database, which we must ensure has accuracy, has integrity, has confidentiality, and is secure at all times so that the data is protected. And finally, it is our bounden duty to make data in our custody available to persons and institutions mandated or authorized by law to receive data from us. Mr Chairman, the mandate of the NIA is pursued within a legal framework that is governed, I mean, a legal framework passed by this very honorable house, various laws that I will not get into for now. But the operational framework operates along this line, that the registration mandate, the communication and stakeholder engagement mandate, the public education, the enforcement of the applicable laws, and revenue generation are the foremost duties of the National Identification Authority. NIA's partner, Identity Management Systems Two Limited, has the duty of designing and building the technical infrastructure, supplying the data and biometric capture equipment, providing card printing infrastructure for instant and deferred issuance, providing smart cards and consumables for the personalization of cards, and providing a global verification infrastructure, and not least, providing operational support and maintenance to NIA as it conducts its public registration activities. Pursuant to the laws establishing NIA, NIA conducted a mass registration exercise between twenty-ninth April twenty nineteen and that one-year program was truncated by COVID-19 pandemic outbreak, thereby prolonging it beyond the twenty-eighth March twenty twenty deadline by which we should have had the work. NIA subsequently conducted a more powerful registration exercise between tenth June twenty twenty and eleventh September twenty twenty. From the third of June twenty twenty-one, NIA conducted a three-month expedited card issuance blitz with the goal of ensuring that registered applicants received their cards ahead of the commencement of the Simcard registration exercise which had been slated for October of twenty, for October of twenty twenty-one. We then subsequently established two fee-paying registration services from the first of July twenty twenty. These were institutional registration at a cost of one hundred Ghana Cedis per applicant for a minimum of fifty and household registration at a fee of hundred and fifty Ghana Cedis per applicant for a minimum of seven applicants. This used to be five applicants until July of twenty twenty-two. And this allows applicants to be registered in the comfort of their offices, homes, or other places of choice. These services were planned to coexist with the free continuous registration services which were provided at the end, at each of NIA's two hundred and ninety-two offices nationwide. Honorable, right honorable speaker, we've also established premium registration services. In October twenty twenty-one, we established premium registration at our head office in Accra at a fee of two hundred and fifty, United, at two hundred and fifty Ghana Cedis, coexisting with the free services available at all our offices. The premium center was to provide an additional option for prospective applicants willing to acquire their cards in relative comfort and convenience at a fee. It is additional, I emphasize, right honorable speaker, to the free arrangement that exists by law. NIA established a premium registration center also at the head office of Car Bank in Accra in March twenty twenty-two. In February of this year, NIA established premium registration centers in Koforidua, Kumasi, and Takrawi. An enrollment performance of these premium centers is being observed to guide the potential establishment of such centers in Cape Coast, Po, Tamil, and other regional capitals of the nation. Right honorable speaker, Members of Parliament, the National Identification Authority established on third November twenty twenty-one sixteen regional offices and two hundred and seventy-six operational district offices simultaneously. Each district office is co-terminous with a constituency, including Seoul. The offices have adequate registration and printing equipment but skeletal staff. The offices require additional personnel and vehicles to function more effectively. Right honorable speaker, permit me at this point to turn my attention to pertinent registration statistics. Right honorable speaker, NIA as at February twenty seventeen had registered four million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand Ghanaians. It had printed the cards of two million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-five Ghanaians and issued nine hundred thousand cards to Ghanaians. Right honorable speaker, if fast forward to nineteenth February twenty twenty-three and the following is a profile. Seventeen million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one Ghanaians have been registered or captured onto the national identity database. The total number of cards printed by the National Identification Authority is sixteen million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four. And the total number of cards collected is sixteen million and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. Right honorable speaker, it's important to also point out that the cards that were being given us at twenty seventeen were basically two-D barcode cards, pretty much like your old driver's license. It had, it captured four fingerprints, had two kilobyte storage capacity, and no tracking number. In twenty seventeen and beginning in twenty, but particularly beginning in twenty nineteen, the cards that we have been issuing are dual-interfered smart cards, capturing ten fingerprints, which is the current global standard, and has a hundred and twenty-eight storage capacity and a tracking number. Mr Speaker, right honorable speaker, the registration statistics as projected here covers the entire nation with the region by region, a total enrolled being the seventeen million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one that I spoke about. And there is also region by region and district by district breakdown of the statistics. When I'm done drawing questions, so if there is interest, we can go to the Excel on the specific regions and districts. Suffice it to say for now, right honorable speaker, that based on the Ghana Statistical Service twenty-twenty population and housing census data, approximately thirty-one million Ghanaians. There are approximately thirty-one million Ghanaians. Of this have indicated seventeen million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one have been captured onto the national identity register database. And this figure represents the cohort of the population aged fifteen years and above. Of the number, that is of the seventeen million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one, the number of Ghanaians aged eighteen years and above captured in the database is sixteen point nine million, sixteen point nine million out of the seventeen point three seventy-five million. And the number of registered Ghanaians aged eighteen years and above existing on the electoral commission's voter's register, we are informed, is seventeen million and twenty-nine thousand, seventeen million and twenty-nine thousand people on the EC voter's register. The number of Ghanaians aged fifteen years and above who are yet to be captured out of the total population of thirty-one million is two million, two hundred and, two million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and five. Mr Chairman, it best repeating, the honorable, right honorable speaker, my apologies, it best repeating that the number of Ghanaians aged fifteen years and captured onto the NIR, the National Identity Register, is seventeen point three million. Of this, the number of cards printed but not collected by the applicants stands at six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and three, six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and three nationwide. The number of cards not yet printed, that is persons who have registered whose records are with the NIA but whose cards have not yet been printed, stands at five hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. Mr Chair, right honorable speaker, kindly permit me to explain that this figure, five hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine, represents the financial difficulties we have had lately, beginning approximately in July, August of last year, that resulted in our inability to get access to some three-point-five million blank cards that we have ordered into the country, which are currently in bonded warehouses, brought into the country by our technical partners, but we are unable to access them because of financial constraints. The bank that have, basically bankrolled that purchase and importation have to be paid and it had become a bit of a financial constipation, which constipation has also given us some, some headaches. Right honorable speaker, the assurance we have for the people of Ghana is that the National Identification Authority has the technical and operational competence to print these five hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine cards in record time once this financial constipation is relieved. Printing capacity per printer per day is conservatively a hundred, but we can do a hundred and sixty, we can do a hundred and twenty. And the plan that I'll be sharing with this August House takes the middle cost of a hundred and twenty. But the most minimum conservative figure, if you use a hundred printers, I mean, one printer per day can do a hundred cards. Number of cards printable per day using five hundred printers will give you fifty thousand cards. And the number of printers required to print five hundred and forty-one thousand cards will be five hundred. And the number of days required to do that will be eleven days. And the number of functional printers available is a minimum of one thousand. Right honorable speaker, the following constitutes a plan, therefore, to print the cards. NIA intends to print approximately five, just, to five hundred and forty-two thousand records in the system because that was nineteenth February when I gave the statistics. Between then and now, it is reasonable to presume that it would have reached five hundred and forty-two thousand. The records in the system across the country can be printed and will be printed within eleven days using five hundred printers at the NIA headquarters, eleven days using five hundred printers at the NIA headquarters, where we intend to use a concept of a printer. The cards will be centrally printed at the headquarters and distributed in district offices for issuance to registered applicants. Right Honorable Speaker, again, NIA has the technical and operational competence to print and issue the cards. We are ready to deliver on this important mandate. However, Right Honorable Speaker, the fulfillment of, the attainment of this goal also depends on the fulfillment of a number of conditions precedent. First, the Ministry of Finance will complete the payment of the hundred million to Idents Limited and Car Bank. I say will because I have evidence confirmed by Car Bank that they have received eighty million of the hundred million Ghana CDs promised as part of the payment plan that we have agreed with them. IMS2 and Car Bank have confirmed receipt of the eighty million. Ministry of Finance has informed NIA that the remaining twenty million will be paid most probably by close of business today. Car Bank, Car Bank will then release a portion of the three point five million blank cards, blank cards in bonded warehouse to NIA through IMS for the card printing. And the Ministry of Finance will provide additional funding of about a hundred and seventy-three thousand CDs to support the expedited card printing exercise that I have just spoken about. Right Honorable Speaker, the plan, the plan is that NIA will engage one hundred card verification officers for this exercise and each card verification officer will staff five printers or manage five printers per day. We have a number of assumptions. I'm not sure that there is interest in going through all of these assumptions, but these are operational assumptions and the opinion, the work that we intend to do. And so over a period of ten to eleven days, we will print the cards, we will set up teams that will, technical teams, that will ensure that this mandate is delivered. The budget for that detail is provided in this table. Suffice it to say, Mister Right Honorable Speaker, that by way of a reminder, the seventeen mandatory uses of the Ghana card, in other words, there are about seventeen activities in which a person cannot engage in Ghana if a person does not possess the Ghana card. One of them is the application for a passport, application issuance of a passport, of a driver's license, of insurance policies, any banking transaction, whether it is personal or commercial, the purchase, transfer and registration of land, including landed properties of all kinds, then transactions that are specified under the National Health Insurance System, the pensions, social security and national insurance trust, consumer credit and, under Regulation seven and eight as I'm reading, registration of voters, payment of taxes, registration of SIM cards, and indeed applications for public or government services, facilities approvals and permissions and benefits, as well as any other transaction that a governing board of NIA may specify. And so school feeding and access to barson services and the rest of them may all be potential subjects, I mean, transactions for which the card is required. Other facilities and services currently under consideration of the governing board is the work of the Registration Service under the Lance Commission, the National Service Secretaryate and the Student Loan Scheme with whom we have, we have advanced considerably discussions on onboarding them in this regard. Right Honorable Speaker, we also have established a verification platform and this verification platform enables banks and other institutions to verify the identities of individuals. So the Bank of Ghana and other financial institutions, all twenty-four universal banks in Ghana are onboarded onto our verification system. Hundred and forty-six rural banks and community banks are all onboarded, sixteen savings and loans, sixteen fintechs, five finance houses and three microfinance institutions. We've also onboarded the Social Security and National Insurance Trust, the Ghana Revenue Authority, the National Health Insurance Authority, the Electoral Commission at an advanced stage of onboarding, and the Ghana Immigration Service, all the telcos, the National Service Secretaryate, the Student Loans Trust and the Passport Office and the DBLA. Mister Chairman, as right Honorable Speakers, I indicated earlier seventeen point three million Ghanaians have their data and biometrics stored on the National Identity Register or NIA database. This provides us as a nation with a single trusted, accurate and verifiable database, with a single accurate and trusted and verifiable national database. Indeed, Right Honorable Speaker, since verification started, over a hundred and twenty million verification requests have been processed in real time and there has not been a single hitch or a single failure. It is a colossal achievement that this country ought to be very proud of. With respect to the integration of our database with EC, the hope is that it will help eliminate the cost of periodic voter ID, voter register compilation, card issuance and voter verification, depending on which of these options the EC will independently select to pursue. But it will also result in the issuance of secure ID, smart cards with ten-year life cycles, if this were ever to be considered. But most importantly, it will eliminate concerns over voter fraud due to the high integrity of our database. There will be no duplication of voter ID and determination of eligibility based on age, based on citizenship and also based on the person's identity, that you will be who you say you are. It will also enhance inclusiveness due to the fast, accurate and enrollment and verification system that is embodied in what we have done. Both online and offline activities, whether you have your card present or not, you can engage in registration activities. But most importantly, credibility of the voter register that will establish the eligibility of applicants, will clean the register to remove names of deceased persons. Indeed, a system we have built will enable the nest of king of deceased persons to be known when the fingerprint of a deceased person is applied to a verification device. And it will help us page the register of minors and save us a headache of conducting periodic and continuous voter registration exercises. The benefits are plenty, but I will save you because the chairperson of the Electoral Commission has spoken very eloquently about the benefits of using the Ghana card to register. Right Honorable Speaker, we will have data harmonization and integration with the various institutions I mentioned, and this will bring us tremendous benefits, Beth and Death Registry, the Passport Office. And if you look at the landscape across the African continent, we are one of the very few places where this high-level smart dual-interface biometric ID card with this kind of biometric database has been established. It is our hope, Mister Chairman, Right Honorable Speaker, that this presentation assures this Honorable House that the National Identification Authority is poised, is ready and able to provide and deliver on this mandate, subject to the provision of the much-needed financial support that is warranted. I thank you very much, Right Honorable Speaker, Members of this August House. Thank you for your attention and for your courtesy. We're most grateful.
Honorable Members, on your behalf, I want to thank the Chairperson and the Executive Secretary of the Electoral Commission and the National Identification Authority for the presentations. We've got copies of the presentation of the Chairperson of the Electoral Commission. And so I'll direct that copies be distributed now. Immediately after that, the Minister for Finance will now respond to the provided, as I said, provided that some things are made available to the National Identification Authority, they are capable of doing one, two, three. So the Minister for Finance will have to respond to that, then will listen to Members on the issues that have been identified. So now the distribution will go on. When you finish the distribution, then the minister can come in. If we do them together, there will be interruption. So now it's a clear for the distribution of copies of the presentation of the Electoral Commission. Please make sure you all get your copies. Please make sure you all get your copies. Honourable members, I am informed that copies have been distributed and the NIA will be distributed. 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 The NIA will be distributed.
Thank you very much, honourable speaker. Honourable speaker, from the presentations, as the NIA professor Atif was said, we had come into an agreement with Carl Merchant Bank to ensure that the 3.5 million cars will be released at the appropriate time for the work to be done. We agreed on 100 million CD transfer. And as he rightly said, 80 million has been put into the accounts of Carl. And 20 million, as he also mentioned, will be done by close of business today. So we are very comfortable about the situation to ensure that the needed cars will be given to the NIA to do its work. Mr Speaker, the government has been extremely good about funding elections. And once NIA's job is linked to the elections, Mr Speaker, we can assure the House that we would ensure that the resources needed would always be provided. Mr Speaker, for example, in 2020, approved budget for the electoral commission was 1.063 billion Ghana cedis. At the end of the day, the government released 1.367 billion to ensure that the elections went on well. It is the same fervour, interest and commitment that now that the NIA is linked to the success of the elections, we'll do our part to ensure that the appropriate resources are made available to NIA. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Honourable members, I propose we take a number of contributors from each side of the House. I would propose we do this in budgets. Can we start with 5-5? Now, each contributor is limited to five minutes. Five minutes, 5-5. That's 25, 25, 15 minutes. That's a lot. So we start we start with the I hope my proposal is accepted. No. Yes. So we start with 1-2-2. Yes, majority leader.
Mr Speaker, unfortunately, I couldn't join you in your presidency meeting. So I'm not too sure of what was determined. But you sound that you are going to have for the first round, 5-5 contributors. And it's open-ended. I don't know what is, what really you aim at, what number. And then you are saying that even the five, everybody is going to have five minutes. That is 25 times, 25 minutes, and that's just the first round. They would, it will listen to responses. So how many do you have in mind to call? So we know. Because the first one alone is going to be more than one of them. And that is why, that's why I want to know what you have in mind. I wasn't there. If any determination was made, I was not part of it, but I want to know.
Majority leader, I premise my statement with this general statement that I'll be guided by the leadership of both sides. And I'm proposing, and that's a proposal I've made, 5-5. And I kept on asking. And I heard majority saying, yes, yes, yes. About two, three people said, no, no. So I wanted to go by the 5-5. But after the number of times that one, I've not stated anything. If we take the 5-5 and it's okay, that answers it. If I wanted to start with 2-2, I have no problem. Yes, minority leader.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. Mr Speaker, the issue under consideration is a very important one. Mr Speaker, this is a matter that we are ready to sit in till late to discuss it and to bring this matter to a finality. I would suggest that the first 5-5 is appropriate. So we do 5-5 and then we can go for a second round before leadership can conclude. Mr Speaker, this is important that we all of us raise the issues that are of major concern. And then we elicit answers, and if the answers are satisfactory, Mr Speaker, we can take action from there. Thank you.
Mr Speaker, I, I Mr Speaker, the impression I'm getting is that the contributors, they are going to further elicit responses from the three of them, the electoral commission, NIA and the finances. And if it's going to elicit responses, that is perhaps speaking to various issues, I'm not too sure that the person then requires five minutes to elucidate on the matter. So in that regard, if you have to do 5-5, I have no problem. Maybe the time for those matters to be addressed, then we'll have to be cut to say maybe two minutes for the, for the five. Each one has two minutes. Let's not forget. Even in budget debate, sometimes when we are constrained, members speak for about five minutes. So I think that, I think that two minutes, the issues are the main, the matters should concern all of us. But I believe that isolating a matter and relating to it should not take five minutes. Mr Speaker, I would plead that in that regard, we allow for about two minutes for a person to address whatever issue a person wants to bring up.
Mr Speaker, today is a special day. It is not business as usual. As we sit here, it is being telecast live. Members, our constituents are sending questions even through mobile phones. Meaning they have developed interest in what is happening here. So, Mr Speaker, after this meeting, whatever signal is going to send out there, if there are questions that we're supposed to ask, but the time has not been given for members to ask those questions, Ghanaians will not forgive us. In that regard, Mr Speaker, there are three presentations. There's a financial presentation by the Minister of Finance. There's civic presentation by the chairperson of the electoral commission. And the NIA. Mr Speaker, these presentations, all things being equal, if you are to structure them into interrogation, the legal people have their questions to ask. The finance people have their questions to ask. The digital people have their questions to ask on data and all those things before it comes to the governors. So, Mr Speaker, if you say you are going to take only 5-5 for each, we may not be able to exhaust the question. That's not too long. You were quoted to have said that even some minority leaders and members of this are debated for three hours, even on two days. The issue under this consideration, as said by the minority leader, is a sensitive one. Look at this, how popular the House has become. Mr Speaker, since when did we record this kind of attendance? So let's have time and be able to ask the necessary questions. Civil society is waiting to hear the questions that will be asked and the responses. The academia are waiting to hear the questions that will be asked and the responses. Mr Speaker, we are representatives. So as persons are coming, we must be given the chance to ask. Mr Speaker, I will open that the first round 5-5, the second round 5-5, then 3-3 for leadership. So making 13. Thank you, Mr Speaker, for the opportunity.
Speaker, I, I, I think we don't need to with respect, we don't need to split our heads over this. I can, if my colleague wants us to do 50-50 questions, we are ready for it. But, 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 but. But fact be told, fact be told, if before we adopted the committee's report, minority leader, you agree with me, three key concerns were teased out. The funding matters, the guarantor concerns and the registration at the point. These were three key issues that came out. Of course, I agree with him, there may be concerns about financial issues. But we, we are, we are fortunate, we have all the three personalities, the Minister of Finance is here. He has spoken, he's confirmed, the minister has confirmed the outstanding. He's confirmed outstanding, he's also confirmed the payment plan. So why, why do you want to overly drag this matter? But in any case, because I would respect, as I said, if they want us to do 100 questions or, or even more, we all sit here and we'll be ready for them.
Honourable members, 5-5, two minutes per person. 5-5, it's questions, it's questions. Oh, I thought we are going to critique 5-5 minutes. And we, we cannot continue, we cannot continue these exchanges. So please, 5-5, three minutes. Three minutes. That is a compromise, 5-5, three minutes. And we start, we start from the left side. And so the first five, we have honourable Dominic Ayine, honourable Mama Yarga, honourable Ablaqua, and then honourable Daphia Mapo. Five. Please, three minutes, three, three minutes. Three minutes. Honourable Dominic Ayine.
Thank you very much, Mr Speaker. Right honourable speaker. Mr Speaker, the the matter that we are being called upon to decide this evening is a matter of grave national importance. It goes to the heart of our democracy. It is about the right to vote. It is also about the exercise of the constitutional mandate of the electoral commission. Mr Speaker, we've had occasion in this House to deliberate on this matter.
Honorable member, three minutes. Very, very well, Mr. Speaker. We have gone through this, all what you are saying, we've gone through them.
Mr. Speaker, I have in my hand here a letter from the electoral commission, which was written on the seventh of December, twenty-twenty-two. And it was addressed to myself as chairman of the subsidiary legislation committee and copied to the majority leader, the honorable Chairman Sabunzu, and then the minority leader, the then minority leader, the honorable Haruna Idushu. Mr. Speaker, in that letter were a number of attachments. And one, the first attachment, exhibit one, said that the number of persons who registered using the vouching system and who were challenged was fifteen thousand four seventy-eight, four seventy-eight. Mr. Speaker, today, in her speech, the chairperson of the EC is now saying that she was able to expound, or the EC was able to expound forty thousand minors and foreigners from the registrar during the registration exercise. Can she honestly reconcile the two figures for us in this house? This is a House of Report. Mr. Speaker, the other thing is that if the CI that she is bringing were passed today, it would have meant that from the presentation of the NIE, there would be three-point-seven million Ghanaians who will not be able to walk to the, uh, the registration centre and register as easily as she has made it to seem. From the figures that have been presented. How does she square that with her mandate under the constitution to expand the voters' register? That's my second question. Then, the other question is, Mr. Speaker, my last question, is on regulation nine. One of the reasons she has given is that we are not, she is not conducting, she is not conducting the continuous registration because the current law does not, does not permit her to do that in a, in an easy way. But, Mr. Speaker, how does she reconcile that proposition with the fact that CI ninety-one, which is the current law, in regulation nine, nine, I mean, the, nine, regulation nine is in substance the same as proposed regulation nine that she is bringing to be enacted? In other words, she can do the same thing seamlessly under the current law as, you know, she would, I mean, be purporting to do.
Your time, your time, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Mama Yarga. Honorable Haruna Idushu.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. We're listening to the chairperson of the electoral commission, Mrs. Jean Mensah, who herself just, as she reported, returned from Nigeria. I want to believe that she travelled to Nigeria on a Ghanaian passport and not a Ghanaian national ID card. So we want to find out what her problem is, accepting the Ghanaian passport for purposes of voter registration and insisting solely on the use of the national ID card. And, Mr. Speaker, I'm saying so because a Ghanaian from Songo may arrive in Accra today on Ghanaian passport, travel to Nagali for purpose of registration. He arrives the day that the NIA is not available to register him as a voter, but he's a Ghanaian with a passport who wants to get registered onto our electoral road, pursuant to his right guaranteed under article forty-two of the constitution. What will happen to that Ghanaian? And then two, two, we need you to establish, and, Mr. Speaker, we are demanding that this is established. We want technical evidence of data sharing infrastructure between the National Electoral Commission, the National Identification Authority and all other agencies that are likely to use the data of national ID card so that we can synchronize. Because, Mr. Speaker, I'm holding two ID cards here. This is a voter ID card produced by the electoral commission. This is a national ID card produced by NIE. In it, you will see that your identifiable individual carried pins are different. So for purpose of synchronization, if there is no evidence of infrastructure of data sharing, you cannot reconcile the pins on this. We need evidence of the infrastructure sharing. Then finally, Mr. Speaker, when we listen to Mrs. Jean Mensah, chairperson of the electoral commission, you stated unequivocally that ten million national ID cards were used in the twenty-twenty election. Your total registered voters for the purpose of the twenty-twenty elections, Mr. Speaker, was thirteen million. Did you declare the thirty-three million additional votes illegitimate? Was it of any essence or of no, I said, Mr. Speaker, I wanted to reconcile that. Mr. Speaker, in her speech, in her speech...
Honorable member, your time is up.
I'm ending on it.
Your time is up.
Mr. Speaker, I'm just concluding on a figure. I'm saying that total votes cast in Ghana twenty-twenty was thirteen million four hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven. She says that ten million people use Ghana card. It means that some three-point-four million use other references other than Ghana card, where their votes illegitimate and they don't undermine our democracy, I thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable members. Um, Mama Yarga.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the presentation of the chairperson, she indicated that she is running away from the guarantor system because it is subject to abuse. At the last time she appeared before our committee and she made this statement, I asked her a question, which is the fact that the National Identity Register Amendment Act of twenty-seventeen has made provision for the National Identification Authority to also use a guarantor system. So why are you running away from your guarantor system to embrace a guarantor system that the National Identification Authority is using? Secondly, secondly, if, if, if in the last registration exercise, if in the last registration exercise, ten million people, ten million people had Ghana ID cards and they presented it for the purposes of registration and the National Identification Authority is claiming that by the next registration exercise or the continuous registration exercise, they would have enabled about seventy million people to have ID cards, Ghana cards. Why don't you leave it so that it remains voluntary? Because people know that it is easier for them to just present their Ghana cards and register. Why don't you make it voluntary? So that if all of them actually have the Ghana cards, they will easily bring it and come and register. Why do you make it compulsory? Why do you make it compulsory? People will naturally register with their Ghana card if they have it because it's the easiest thing for them to do, which is to register with their Ghana cards. That's why we are against you making it compulsory. Lastly, Mr. Speaker, you cite a legal grounds, which is the National Identity Register Regulations of twenty-eleven, LI two-one-one-one. You are my senior at the bar, think you are my senior at the law faculty. Go and look at, go and look at the, no, the parent act, the National Identity Register Act. The National Identity Register Act is section twenty-seven. Sorry, twenty-nine, use of national identity card. Use of national identity card. It says the national identity card may be used to facilitate B, the provision of personal information to a person entitled to receive the information. Mr. Speaker, it says may be used, may be used. Then you go and make regulations under this same act that gives you power to make regulations. You go and make regulations and now say that a national identity card issued to an individual shall be used. Shall be used. The parent act doesn't say shall be used. The parent act says may be used. So the, the, the electoral commission, the electoral commission will not be bound by this LI. Mr. Speaker, apart from that, the Citizenship Act...
Honorable member, your time is up.
Can I, can I conclude, Mr. Speaker? Can I conclude? Mr. Speaker, can I conclude?
You are, it's not my fault, your time is up, your time is up. Honorable members, that is the decision of this house. So I am to enforce the law. And you, and whether you are shouting or you are hitting the table, it can change. Three minutes is three minutes. So your time is up. Uh, honorable Ablaqua.
Right, honorable speaker, I, 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 I want to seek your leave. If it's possible to see thirty seconds of my time to honorable Yariga. I, I promise you, I'll use two and a half minutes. I promise you, I promise you.
It says thirty seconds from now.
Mr. Speaker, the Citizenship Act of two thousand, Act five-nine-one, provides for evidence of citizenship. And so it says that the minister may, on an application made by or on behalf of any person with respect to whose citizenship of Ghana, a doubt exists under part one of this, acceptifies that the person is a citizen of Ghana. Just to make a point that you cannot make Ghana card the only mechanism for establishing citizenship. Because this parliament has another law which makes provision for a mechanism for establishing citizenship. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Ablaqua, two minutes, thirty seconds.
Very grateful, right, honorable speaker, right, honorable speaker. My first question is directed at the electoral commissioner. I want to find out from the electoral commissioner why she thinks that this honorable house should allow for this CI to be passed on mere assurance, knowing that she wanted us to do this in July last year. Imagine if we had come along. See where we are today. Eight months down the lane, we still do not have the, the NIA ready. Imagine if we came along in July last year. And if she, if she, if she should be minded, the last time a minister of state decided to use NIA and rely on deadlines and all of that, the communications minister, her, she, she, her hands were bent. She kept extending deadlines and she even abandoned it. She no longer extended the deadline again and she is abandoning the SIM card registration deadline. And I thought you have learned from the experience of the communications minister. You are following on that blind alley. So that's the first question. The second question to the finance minister, honorable finance minister, we want to see a warrant, we want to see evidence that you have released funds. Because your record in this house, you told us you don't go to IMF. You told us you used public funds for the national cathedral. You did, you told us that individual bondholders will be paid by, by, by twenty-first, uh, twenty-first February. You failed, so your record in this house is not good. We will not take your word, won't take your assurance for it. We want to see evidence, evidence, warrant, warrant, evidence of payment. Finally, Mr. Speaker, the NIA.
Your, your time is up.
The NIA, NIA, finally, NIA.
No, finally.
We want a breakdown, breakdown of the figure. There's some, there's sixty million, district by district.
The last, the last five, Daphia Mapo. Daphia Mapo, three minutes.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, we have been told by this house and, and, and the, uh, the EC that regulation two-one-one-one, two thousand and twelve, as quoted by my learned brother, Honorable Yarida.
Twenty-eleven.
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty-eleven.
Regulation twenty-one eleven is twenty-twelve.
The year is twenty-eleven, not twenty-twelve.
The, the, okay. Okay, Mr. Speaker, we have been told that regulation two-one-one-one makes mandatory use of the card. But this is what the law says. It says that a national identity card issued, issued, that is the controlling phrase, that a person must be issued with the card before he or she could be demanded to use it mandately. So the interpretation they are placing on this provision is misleading. That's number one. Number two, number two, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, if I am not issued with the card, no entity can expect me to make mandatory use of it. That is what the law is saying. Number two, the new, the new, the proposed instrument says that other than the EC office, which is the registered office of the electoral commission in the district, no existing police station will be designated a registration centre. When the existing CI ninety-one miscler provision in regulation two sub-regulation four, that all existing police stations be made designated registration centres because the law requires that registration centres ought to be gazetted for clear weeks before registration commences. The title of the new provision will tell us, will, will not know the number of police stations that will be converted as registration centres to be known to the key players. So we want them to answer that. Mr. Speaker, regulation clause thirty-three of the proposed CI, I have said it, others doubt it. That is the saving provision, it may be saving, but under that clause, the EC can decide to compile a new voters' register tomorrow based on the bastardization of the voters' register they have now. They claim that it has been abused as a result of the guarantor system. So if the CI is passed today and she proceeds to compile the voters' register tomorrow, it is parliament that will be blamed for that. Mr. Speaker.
Honorable member, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Um, honorable members, we now listen to honorable Habib.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, Mr. Speaker, my question go to the, uh, NIA. I can't see the... Speaker, I can't see the NIA. Okay, um, Mr. Speaker, NIA, electoral commission is relying on your Ghana card to use it as a sole ID for the continual registration. Now there is... Now there is CI 91, there is a guarantor system already in CI 91. NIA, you also have a guarantor system. I would like to know from the Executive Secretary of NIA, what's the difference between your guarantor system and the NIA and that of the EC CI 91? And question number two, who administer the oath, if there is any, on NIA and electoral commission? How is your guarantor system also work? Thank you.
It's now the turn of Honorable Obi Amoah.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this question goes to the electoral commission. Article 51 of the Constitution of Ghana, 1992, says the electoral commission shall by constitutional instruments make regulations for the effective performance of its functions under this constitution or any other law and in particular for the registration of voters, the conduct of public elections and referenda, including provision for voting by proxy. Now, can you explain to us why the proposed CI is very important? And how, and how the CI will expose impersonators and fraudsters who don't have any form of identity? Thank you.
Honorable members, it's now the time for Honorable Yaobwama. Honorable Yaobwama.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, um, the electoral commissioner on page six of her report to the House stated that she intends to register, the commission intends to register between 450,000 and 550,000 Ghanaians every year. We know the exercise couldn't take place in 2021, 2022, 2023 and 2024, going into 2025. So my estimation is about 1.8 million Ghanaians to be registered between now and the next elections. We know you've, uh, put in place measures to take care of this backlog. My question is, what are some of the inherent challenges within all the legislations that members have raised that you are seeking to cure to ensure that we have a credible register? I believe that is the concern of every member on the floor, to have a very credible register and to ensure that every Ghanaian of 18 years of age and of sound mind gets on their road to vote in 2024. Thank you very much, madam.
Honorable members, we now listen to Honorable Mathieu Opoku Prempre.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think the biggest source of confusion listening to members is that they think, they suspect that the electoral commission wants to conduct a registration exercise for a totally new register. That's the fundamental basis. If it is not so, and that all the people who are already registered and eligible to vote at the last election will count the same, then I must ask, what is the fear? Meaning that my, my question is that some people are already set. My question is that some people have already set their own pressing, answered their own pressing and then taking the answers through back to the electoral commission to justify the answers. If the old register holds and that's so 73 million people who are the old register need not register again, that is the assurance this house needs. As for the continued registration, I'm not giving a speech, you might not understand it. As for continuous registration, I want to know whether members do agree with the electoral commission that going forward, going forward, continuous registration will be really continuous registration? I know your thoughts. Because there's a nervous impression being created that every police station will become a registration centre. Never, never in this country has every police station been a registration centre at the same time. So what, what is your fear? In 2012, my third question. In 2011, if true, in 2011, if this house, under the governance of its Excellency John Attamills, passed an LI or brought an LI to this house that was passed, that said in 2011, for the purpose of identification, the national ID card is the number one identity register. What is your fear 12 years down the line? If the EC says every Ghanaian should use a national ID, what do you have to hide? Thank you.
Honorable members, we now take Honorable Anor Dompre.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, my first question is to the Finance Minister. I love to premise that question with a fact. Speaker, not too long ago, Parliament has some outstanding, myself and the Deputy Whip, Yonavu Ahmed, related to the Finance Ministry, and duly, that outstanding was released. I want to find out from the minister, in the same vein, can he assure this house that in the next two days or so, the outstanding 20 million Ghana cities own the NIA? Speaker, the 20 million own the NIA, can the minister assure us that this outstanding will be duly paid? This was my first question to the Finance Minister. Speaker, we've heard and read a number of, eh, stuff on cards printed. We've, we've heard, I don't know if it's a rumor, that outstanding cards to be printed is 3 million, some are saying 2 million. Today we are hearing about 541,000. Can the NIA say on authority what the outstanding cards are? And then in the event of you being provided with outstanding 20 million by the Finance Ministry, can you guarantee this house, as you made known in your presentation, that within 11 days, as you stated, within 11 days, all the outstanding will be dealt with? Again, we've heard concerns about guarantor system. And I'll be happy to be educated. What is the problem with the guarantor system and how can that be cured? Finally, the use of the Ghana card as the main source of identification.
Honorable member, your, your time is up, your time is up.
Speaker, I can't, the NIA boss, you are just concluding.
There's nothing I can do about it.
Yes, I'm concluding. Whether the NIA boss can tell us or the EC boss can tell us the use of.
Honorable member, your time is up. Now I'll allow the EC and the NIA to respond to the issues you have raised. We will start with the EC.
Yes, thank you very much. I think Honorable Ablaqwa raised the issue of, you know, the EC's intention to have started the continuous registration in July. And he's, he notes that, you know, that was eight months ago. And in his view, if the CI had been passed, you know, the commission would not have been able to achieve or attain, you know, the continuous registration because of the challenges that the NIA is facing. And I, I believe that is true. But it's important that we recognize that it is a continuous registration exercise. Had we had a system where it was a limited registration exercise? Let's say that in July of 2022, we decided to conduct a limited registration exercise for a period of four weeks, then we would have that challenge. Because at the end of four weeks, if persons didn't have the register, they would not be able to. If they didn't have the NIA card, we would not be able to register them. But the good news is that this is a continuous registration process. And had we initiated the process as far back as July, you know, people would still not be disenfranchised. Because if they do not have the card today, they would always go, they could always have it tomorrow. So what we are saying is that had we been maintaining the limited registration process, then the NIA's inability to supply the cards would have led to disenfranchising citizens. Because we have a continuous process, if you don't have the card in July, you can have the card in March and still come to the offices to, to register. So I think that because it is a continuous process, it, there's no rush. Yes, we have all the way to October 2024 to have people register. But there is no rush because it is not a limited process. I think Honorable Haridaisu raised the issue about 10 million people using the Ghana card to, to, to prove their citizenship or to, to qualify to, to be registered. And he noted that, you know, 13.4 million people, you know, voted in the 2020 election. And so why is the EC or did the EC or is the EC classifying that the 3 million who used either, who may have come through the guarantor system or the passport as illegitimate? And did the EC, you know, disqualify them and, and so on and so forth? But I think that at the time, I think it's important that we recognize that at the time of the registration, we had in addition to the Ghana card, people could come through using the guarantor system and the passport. And so, and so therefore, they were not, yeah, no, I think we should understand. So therefore, they were not illegal because their law ensured, the law provided that they could come. Yeah, the law provided. Yeah, because their law, I think, I think we should understand. I think it's a simple argument. You have a law and the, you have a law that allows you to use the Ghana card to come through the guarantor system or to use the passport to, to, to prove your eligibility. You have that law. And therefore, if people came in using their passports or came in through the window of the guarantor system or use their Ghana card, those who came in using the passports or the, um, the guarantor system cannot be classified as illegal because at the time it was the law. But under this law, no, no, no. Under this law, yeah, I, 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 under this law, we are saying that you cannot come in through the guarantor system or use a passport to prove your citizenship. Yeah, I, I, yeah. Under this law, we are saying that you cannot, you know, under this CI, we are saying that you cannot come in or prove your eligibility through the guarantor system or the passport. So here, if you come in, here basically under this CI, you can't come under those, you know, conditions. But in the past, you could and therefore you cannot be classified as being illegal. So if you have 10 million persons coming who registered using the Ghana card and of the, and you also have, you know, you know, you have 3 million persons who came using the guarantor system or the passport. Under the previous law, they could not be classified as illegal. I think that. Yes, I think the Honorable Aiyi also raised the issue about the figures. And because he has on his sheet a figure of 15,000 plus who were challenged as minors. If you look on that sheet, you will find that 32,762 people were successfully challenged during the, you know, the registration process under the DRLC. And in our records, we have an additional 7,000 plus who were challenged. And these 32 were successfully challenged because they were either minors or foreigners. 32,762, they were successfully challenged during the registration and during the district registration review commission, committee settings. They were challenged because they were either minors or foreigners. But after, apart from that, we also have an additional 7,000 persons who were challenged as part of our education process because we could not identify, you know, they could not be identified and for identification purposes. I think the question was also asked about the difference between the NIA guarantor system and the electoral commission's guarantor system. I think the NIA's guarantor system they have in place is more robust. And it is more robust and they have, they swear. Hello? I think, I think the NIA system is more robust. They have, they swear an oath.
Honorable members, honorable members. Please, you have asked questions. She is answering the questions. You may disagree with her, but please listen to her. Later on, we can take that on. Let's listen to her answers first. Please go on.
Yeah. I think that the NIA, eh, guarantor system. I think that the NIA guarantor system is more robust because they have persons who come through swearing an oath whilst we don't. Secondly, secondly, I think that those who serve as guarantors have their details attached to the registrant's application. Those who serve as guarantors have their details attached to a person's application and we don't. And then thirdly, you know, there's evidence that more people have registered for the Ghana card, more people have the Ghana card. And, and that's why we intend to rely on that. And then there was a question on data sharing as well. We are not, as we speak, we are not doing data sharing. There's no sharing of data between the NIA and, you know, automatic sharing of data between the NIA and the EC. However, you know, we, we have the ability to, you know, expound persons on our register and forward it to the NIA for verification. But we do not have an automatic, you know, data sharing facility existing between our two organizations. However, we can expound, we can draw up a list of persons and send that to the NIA for them to verify. That facility exists, but we don't have an automatic data sharing facility with them. I think there was also a question. I think there was a question on the registration centers. And the CI, the draft CI that lies before us, Regulation 2, 2, or let's say 2.1 and 2.2 of the CI speaks about the designation of registration centers. And it says that the Commission shall designate as a registration center, the district office of the Commission and any other place that the Commission considers appropriate. As such, this, once again, if should the Commission deem it fit, to establish registration centers in places other than the district offices, the CI makes provision for that. I know the argument has been made that the district, some of the district offices may be far, but if you look at Regulation 2, 2B, it says that the Commission shall designate as a registration center, any other place that the Commission considers appropriate. And therefore, centers can be set up outside the district offices. And so, yeah, so basically, that is it. It is not limited to only the district offices, but it can, centers can be set up in any other place that the Commission deems fit. And therefore, in difficult to access district offices, the Commission will take steps to designate, you know, accessible centers as registration centers. I think there was also a question on whether the EC is going to be compiling a new register. And I think we made it clear in our statement that the EC will not be compiling a new voters' register. What we are doing is to add on, to update the current register by bringing on board persons who are 18 or persons who previously did not participate in the voters' register. And so we are not going to be compiling a new register. We are merely updating and adding on by making available opportunities for persons who have turned 18 or persons who have not previously registered, registered to come on board the register should they deem fit.
Honorable members, let's now listen to the Executive Secretary, National Identification Authority. Ayariga's question will be answered by the National Identification Authority. They will answer it.
Mr. Speaker.
Your question.
Yes, I, I, I did ask, I did ask a question.
Yes.
About Regulation 9. Mr. Speaker, I have read thoroughly the statement of the EC chairperson. And basically, it is founded on the premise that the current CI, that is CI 91, does not allow for the kind of continuous registration that you want to do with a new CI. Meanwhile, Regulation 9 of the old CI and Regulation 9 of the new CI coincide in their substance. Mr. Speaker, this is very important. She should be able to convince this out, that if it is, that is the premise of the change in the law. Okay, the substantive content of Regulation 9 in the proposed CI should be different from the substantive content in the old one, but that is not the case, Mr. Speaker. So she should be able to answer that question right now. It's important, Mr. Speaker, very, very important. No, it's okay.
Yes, EC, EC. EC just respond to this issue.
Honorable Ayeide, my classmate. I think that, you know, I think that the emphasis with this current CI that lies before us is that we are seeking to mainstream the continuous registration exercise. In the previous CI, it was not, you know, that was not the emphasis. But if you look at this CI, it is to seek to mainstream, make it part and parcel of our daily functions to have continuous registration. Additionally, the CI differs from the previous CI in, with the, the documentation that one has to provide to prove one's eligibility. And we know that in the previous CI, you had to provide either the passport, the Ghana card, or to come through the guarantor system. But in this CI, the difference is that you have to, we are asking, we are seeking to apply or ensure that persons who come through, come through with only the Ghana card. But the significant difference is that this CI seeks to mainstream continuous registration and to make it a part and parcel of our daily functions. Thank you.
Yes, Executive Secretary, National Identification Authority.
Thank you very much, right, Honorable Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I will, I will address the question or comment by Honorable Dr. Dominic Ayeide. I do not see. I, I do not see what aspects of NIA's presentation leads to the conclusion that 3.7 million Ghanians would not be able to vote if, for example, they wanted to do so today. There's nothing I have said, there's nothing in the data that we provided that would lead anyone to that conclusion, if I could be aided, but certainly not from the presentation I made. Second, I'd like to draw attention, I mean, I speak to the issue that Honorable Mahama Ayariga raised about.
Mr. Speaker, there is a point of correction. Because the Chief Executive Officer of the NIA mentioned me with respect to certain figures. Mr. Speaker, he said to this House, he's on record, as having said that, 2,565,705 eligible voters are yet to be registered on to, or eligible persons are yet to be registered. Is that correct or not? Is that correct or not? Yes, that, that's 2,565,705 persons eligible to be registered by your entity are yet to be registered. Is that correct?
It's chairman.
No, it's from, from your own slides.
This is Chairman, with greater respect. We are in a committee, a committee of the whole. And our orders provides, with a greater respect, in order 200, that in committees, the standing orders of the House shall be observed so far as may be applicable. Mr. Speaker, we are not here for cross-examination. You, you ask a question, the person is answering, then you interject to cross-examine. It is not permitted under our rules, with the greatest respect. Please, please, but I'm saying, I'm saying that. So let's, let's, let us structure the responses and the questions. That's the point I'm making. That's the point I'm making. You don't just interject and cross-examine. Please, I believe that adequate space.
Are you, are you okay?
Honorable, I believe adequate space will be created so that if you want to ask a follow-up question, it will be granted. But the interjection is what I'm worried about.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Ayeide had every right to stand up. The director had called his name in relation to a question he had asked. And so to say that the Honorable is basically interjecting, this Honorable member will not do that, of course. I agree, but to say that of the Honorable member.
Honorable Deputy Leader. Yes, Honorable Dominic Ayeide, just finish your point of order.
So, so, Mr. Speaker, his own last slide is what I'm relying on. And in that slide, he said there are 2,565,705 eligible persons who are yet to be registered. Okay? I'm not discouraging him. Then he said in the slide that 642,403 printed cards have been, I mean, have not yet been collected. Is that not correct? Then he says that 541,529 not yet printed, meaning that if you add the 2.5 to these figures, as of now, the number of Ghanians who do not have the, I mean, the card is, I mean, 3,749,639. And that is the reason I asked the EC chair, that if today the EC chair had her instrument passed, these Ghanians will not be able to walk to the registration center to register. Is that true or not?
Well, well, well.
Yes.
Honorable members, he has asked his question. Please, let's listen to the Executive Secretary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it is true that I said that the number of Ghanians aged 15 years and above, please, 15 years and above, who are yet to be registered is 2,565,705. It is also true that I said that the number of cards printed but not yet collected is And finally, it is true that I said that the number of cards not yet printed is 541,529. Mr. Chairman, those statements are statements of fact, but they do not lead, they do not entitle anyone to add the number of unprinted cards, the number of persons aged 15 and above, and the number of persons who have not collected their cards and presume that all of those are persons eligible to vote or to register and vote. It's a complete miss, it's a complete miscalculation. That is not the point because the persons aged 15 and above who have not yet registered, 15, it includes minus, 15 and, I mean, 15 and above includes persons who are minors. So you cannot draw the conclusion that these people are entitled to register. So, so that, so that is it, that is number one. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, I have not.
Honorable members, honorable members, please, it's better we remain silent so that you be able to hear him well. If you begin to mama, you wouldn't hear anything. Please, let's, Honorable Adomo, please, take your seat. Take your seat, you take your seat. Let him finish answering the question, take your seat.
Second, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, second, the number of cards not yet printed, I have given the assurance to this honorable House that, given the resources, we will be able to print those cards in 11 days. And I've also, as I, the speaker, as I sit here, I have received, I've received notification, I've received notification from the Honorable Deputy Minister for Finances, Honorable Abina Osay Asari, that the 20 million that was outstanding has been, that the 20 million that was Ghana series that was outstanding has been paid. I have cross-checked with Carbank and I have received notification from Carbank that that payment also has been received, meaning that the 100 million that was outstanding has been completely paid off, paving way for the conversation that will result in the release of cards for us to print, the 541,529. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker, it does not follow that such a number of people will not be eligible to, to vote. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to also speak to the issue that Honorable Mahama Ayariga raised about the Shao and May, or the May and the Shao. Mr. Speaker, the, it is the case that Section 29 of NIA's Parent Act at 750, as amended, provides as follows. A national identity card may be used to facilitate, a national identity card may be used to, please, may be used to facilitate, A, the process, the process of an application for personal information, the process of an application for personal information that has been recorded as an entry in a specified part of the register for an individual. So it is a process, the card may be required to facilitate the process of an application for information that is stored in a specified part of the register of an individual. Second, the provision of personal information to a person entitled to receive the information. What this means is that the police, for example, may ask NIA for information on a particular person. The police may ask the person for their ID card, then use that ID card to, as part of the process, to access information from NIA. And I can assure the Honorable Member of Parliament that the Ghana Police Service and the IOKO and the intelligence community have taken advantage of this law, this provision, and ask for information. When they do, they may take information, they may take information about the person, they may use a person's Ghana card and say to NIA, this is the person's personal identification number, give us information on the person. That is the. That is the may use, that is the optional use of the card as provided for under, uh, section twenty-nine of, at seven five zero. When you come to LI twenty-one eleven, section, I mean, Regulation Seven of LI twenty-one eleven, what it provides is that a national identity card issued to an individual shall be used for the following transactions where identification is required. The emphasis there, Mister Speaker, is where identification is required. So whenever you must transact, whenever you must engage in a transaction where your identity, uh, identification is required to be proven, then the Ghana card shall be required. Those, those. Now, that, that, that is, that is a, that is a provision of LI twenty-one eleven passed by this honorable house in twenty, in twenty twelve. And, and Mister Speaker, there are two separate and distinct things. One is for the establishment of the identity of a person. The other is for requesting for information stored in a person. For verification purposes, for example, for verification purposes, the, the, a person may request for information using the Ghana card. But when it comes to identification of a person, then the Ghana card shall be required. Mister Speaker, that is my understanding of the, the distinction between the two provisions. I think there was finally a question, finally, a question about, um, evidence of.
Honorable Daphia, you've never had opportunity, you already spoken. You spoke, you, I'll give you the opportunity, you sit down, let him, let him, uh, continue the answering.
Mister Speaker, there was also a question about the difference between NIA's guarantor system and, uh, Electoral Commission's guarantor system. Um, as a, um, Chairperson of the, the Chairman of the EC has indicated, ours is a more rigorous system. It requires that the person making the oath, the person making the oath guaranteeing for another person, does so before a commissioner for oaths. It was for that reason that the Chief Justice of the Republic trained uh, uh, over thirteen hundred commissioners for oaths whom we deployed at every registration center. So that every, so that every person vouching does so before a commissioner for oaths. It enables the trust element to be established, it enables track and tracing, and if you perjure yourself, the consequences are clear. Finally, because of the vouching system, you, the person who is vouching must have the Ghana card already. And therefore, the vouch of the person vouching is tied to the person for whom he or she, however, they are told and can always make a false vouching that someone is a Ghanaian when the person, in the EC system, in the EC system, the vouching a person, it is not done by a specified set of persons. In the NIA system, it is one relative who already has a Ghana card or two persons qualified by law through the governing board of NIA. And again, those two persons qualified by, uh, uh, certain elevated criteria must also have had their Ghana cards. In the EC system, that is not the arrangement. So that is why the, as, uh, the Chairman of the EC said, the NIA system is more robust and it allows for this tracking and tracing, which can lead to the prosecution of persons who have falsely vouched for the identities of, um, other persons. And the final person I want to speak to is from Honorable Anodonpre, who asks whether NIA can print the cards within eleven days if given the funds? I think I've answered it loud and clear, yes, we can. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Very well. I think, I think there were some persons to the Finance Minister. He's not answered your question. Honorable Okudjua Bata is saying you.
Because, because from the slides, we only have the regional, the regional global figures, but we don't have constituency by constituency.
Yes, Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, the honorable, um, Okudjua Blackwa is right. The, the, the honorable, uh, Member of Parliament is right. And indeed, I promised to give that, I have it here and, um, I can give it, I have the, um, just a second. Um, I have the Excel here, um, we can connect and I can project it. But every region and every district you want, I have it here and I can give it to you. As at the nineteen, as at the nineteenth of February twenty, twenty twenty-three. You want me to?
Yeah, Chairman, please, can you, Chairman, we need your ruling so that it will be made available to us, it's, it's German.
No, I'm not taking any questions again.
No, Chairman, please rule, give a direction. No, it's important, we can't leave it hanging.
Honorable.
Let's, 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 let's resolve this, Mister Speaker.
Honorable Daphia, you are signaling that time, 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 I'm not, I'm not taking any questions. You are signaling me, time, 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 isn't it?
It's very important.
You are signaling me. Yes, so you can rule that a copy will be made available for members, that's all. Rule that members can get copies of the, of the report that has been requested, that will be made available to members. We want your ruling that it will be made available to members of, of the Excel. Yes, he's saying members can got copies, so.
This is very important, Mister Chairman, I just heard, I just heard the, the Chief Executive Officer of the NIA interpret Regulation Seven, Subregulation E of LI two one one.
Honorable Daphia, I've not given you the opportunity. The interpretation, that is your understanding, and that is his understanding.
No, I want to ask him a question. And the question is this, that if you interpret the law, if you interpret the law the way you are done, then over two million cards that you have not given to Ghanaians, can it expect those people a mandatory use of the card that you have not issued to them? You have not issued the card to the people. Can it be expected that the two point something million people, there will be a mandatory requirement for them to use the card as you have interpreted in the law? So the law says issued cards, issued, that is why the emphasis is. So stop misreading the law, stop that. That the copies, that the copies be made available today, today, today. That the copies be available today to members.
Mister, Mister Chairman, um, the Deputy Leader is insisting that the information given by the NIA should be availed now, now, now. I think, I think that is impractical, that is impractical. In any event, in any event, as I keep saying, the rules of the house apply even in plenary. And the rules provide, again, Rule sixty-seven, sixty-seven one eight, a question shall not be asked the answer to which is readily available in official publication, he's quoting from his official publication. I don't know, apply yourself to the rules and you appreciate what you are doing. And these semantics we see, apply yourself to the rules. But Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, if, if members need it, if members need it and, and, um, the instruction, the directive is that it should be supplied. It's all, it's all well and good, but I'm just saying that this, this insistence is really superfluous. It's superfluous because you are required to assess the official publication on your website. Who told you? Your phone is limited, your phone is limited, your phone is limited.
Honorable Member for North Town, I think the information you requested is being ruled out.
So, so we need copies so we can analyze.
We're going to give, uh, uh, hard copies.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Honorable Members, I think some of the questions were directed to the Finance Minister. So you give him the opportunity to also. Honorable Members. A champion. A champion, take your seat, please. Honorable Champion, take your seat. Oh. Honorable Members, we are now giving the opportunity to the Finance Minister. Some of the persons were directed to him, so. Oh, Honorable, Honorable Gaya.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mister Speaker. I think that, that the main question was about the hundred million CDs um, to be transferred to Carbank IMS. And that has been confirmed by the Director for NIA. We have indeed, um, transferred the eighteen million Ghana CDs. And today, um, swift instructions for the twenty million has also been executed. Um, so, Mister, uh, Mister Speaker, um, that has been done as assurance and will continue, uh, to work with the program that we've agreed over Car. Mister Speaker, we do take, um, elections very seriously. And as I mentioned in the last election, uh, we actually ensured appropriate, um, amounts were paid to the Electoral Commission to ensure that. Uh, we had a successful, I will continue to do same. And let me assure this house that all expenses related, um, to this will be duly complied with. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Very well. Honorable Members. Honorable Members, Honorable Member for North Town, there's no further questions.
No, Mister Chairman, we're asking for evidence, evidence.
Honorable Members, let me now come to leadership. Leadership, do you have any concerns to raise?
This is, Mister Speaker.
Okay, we have the leadership and the government. Yes, I will now listen to the minority leader.
Uh, Ma- Mister Speaker, the understanding is that we will have the first five-five and then we'll do a second five-five before the leadership speaks.
Yes, that's it.
Mister Speaker, there are others waiting for their attend to ask their questions. There will be the need for them to be given opportunities so that they can ask their questions and this matter be cleared once and for all. Another set of five, be, be before the leadership speaks.
Very well, very well, then I don't have your list. Minority your list. I have the majority, I don't have the minority. He's not here.
Mister Speaker, we've given you thirteen days.
He's here. Honorable Members. Honorable Members. Honorable Members. It appears time is past, please. Will you listen to me? Honorable Members, will you listen to me? So I want the questions to be straightforward, I don't want any. So, Honorable Eric Opoku, you can begin.
Thank you very much.
But just be straightforward, please.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, the constitutional instrument, the constitutional instrument being discussed comes under Article forty-two. And Article forty-two is very clear, it says, every citizen of Ghana of eighteen years of age or above and of sound mind has the right to vote and is entitled to be registered as a voter for the purposes of public elections and referendum. Mister Speaker, from the presentations we have listened to this evening, it is clear that if the constitutional instrument is passed today, it will be an offense to this particular article because not all Ghanaians, not all Ghanaians have the Ghana card. And that is the reason why you have brought the Finance Minister here, to come and give us the assurance, to come and give us the assurance, inviting this house to pass a law on assurance that the right thing will be done in future. Why is it that we cannot wait until the gap is closed by NIA before the constitutional instrument is passed? That is the first question, why? Then my second question has to do with the guarantor system. In your response to a question posed by Honorable Ayaga, you indicated that the NIA guarantor system is a robust one. Why can't the Electoral Commission deploy the same robust or even super robust one as an alternative route for those who do not have the Ghana card to also have their names on the electoral roll so that we can bring this matter to the end? And then the last question has to do with limiting registration to the district offices. Mister Chairman, that is a right, voting is a right that must be exercised by every eligible Ghanaian. And so if you limit registration to the district office and the person is in the village far away from that particular office, who bears the cost of traveling from that village to that office to be able to exercise that constitutional duty? So now, if you don't have money to travel to that district office, you cannot register and participate in the voting, is that what you're telling us? Are you monetizing the registration process?
Honorable Eric, that time is passing. Yes, we'll now move to Honorable Emmanuel Boa.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, in the, in issue about the NIA's, the failure of the NIA deadlines, when we're talking about the reliance by the Minister of Communication, this is what the EC said, that about the NIA, she cited the continuous registration and said that if you did not get it in March, you can get it at, 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 at a later date. But that is exactly the, the fear, that's exactly the worry. I mean, what prevents the Electoral Commission? Today, we know that the EC sitting here today has told us that they still have challenges. The Minister of Finance is here, the NIA owes one hundred and seventy million dollars. The amount they paid is nine million dollars, and that's a fact, that's a fact. So knowing all these problems, what is really driving us? Why don't we stick with the status quo? We get the NIA to complete the process before we deal with it. What prevents the EC from doing that? Secondly, the National Identification Authority is more robust. This is the EC boss saying this. He says that the NIA system is more robust, when we were talking about the Garanta system. Because those who use the Garanta system, they swear an oath. So if that is robust and effective, what prevents the EC from adopting that system? The same Garanta system, if that works? And it's not the same question. And then on the third one, on the district capital, there's other consequential dangerous processes involved in that. The registration at the district office will, the district officers will also assign police stations. You know our population, you know the number of, I mean, excuse my language, people who are not very educated. They come to the district office on a day of voting, how do they even identify where their police stations will be? I mean, and then the danger of gerrymandering. We are now going to leave the district, the EC officers at the district office to deal with police station, people who go there to register. Have you thought about the danger that involves? They decide, okay, districts, if they have preferences at the district offices, they can decide that you are registering, I'll put you in this district, I'll put you in this district. Several areas that really will create confusion for our democracy. Have you thought about the dangers of gerrymandering in this exercise, leaving at a police station? I mean, the issue of the economic and logistical difficulties of ordinary Ghanians traveling through the country.
Emmanuel, your time is up.
Have you talked about gerrymandering, how you can maneuver to make sure that people are skilled to areas that have preferences of electoral offices? These are the issues that are really at the core of the things we're dealing with.
Your time is up, Emmanuel. Okay, I'll see the chair to Mr. Speaker. So now, it's Edward Bauer, your turn.
They said five-five again, that's what they said, so you started one, two, three. So this is the third one. So then when you...
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, when the Electoral Commissioner was speaking, he was proud to have stated that the Electoral Commission has a proven track record. I believe that this proven track record was because of the performance of her predecessors. If you observe very clearly, on election matters, consensus building is key because that is what prevents conflicts. Cote d'Ivoire is just by a year. By virtue of the fact that laws were passed to create the impression that others were not citizens, created problem in Cote d'Ivoire. Afaridjan handed over to Charlotte, Charlotte gave it to you. This country was in one piece. This country was in one piece. If this country goes to war because of this, it will be on your head, it will be on your head. This country goes on... Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you recall that in 2006, when the...
Honorable Members. Honorable Members, please. There are, there are some things you don't say and there are some things, some things you don't do. Now, the Honorable Member said, if this country goes to war. Now, some people have already gone to war. I don't want to mention your name, but you are already up and your hands and your statements, if they were on the mic, you are going to war already. Please, Honorable Edward Bauer. It is something that should not be said. So I will, because this is televised life and we should be careful that what we say don't incite disorder. At the same time, I will also talk to you, Honorable Katie Hamon, Senior Prophet, that as a Senior Prophet, I expect you not to react the way you are reacting. Please. Honorable Senior Prophet. All your fingers are still in my mouth, I can buy them. So please, you must behave or else. The Honorable Deputy Minister for Finance objected to what he said, but he did not act in similar manner. But I heard, I heard what he was also saying. Anyway, yes, kindly withdraw that and then go on to the point. We're making a very good point, I was noting it down, so go ahead, but withdraw that statement about going to war. It is a prayer of everybody in Ghana here that this country will not go to war.
Mr. Speaker.
Let's continue to pray that way.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker.
Any conditions to...
Um, I just, um, I'm a science student. When you go into the laboratory, before you perform the experiment, you state the precautions. All I was doing was just stating the precautions that the Electoral Commission must take to ensure that we don't go the path of Cote d'Ivoire. That's what I was doing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What are you doing now? Are you withdrawing it or you are not?
Oh, Mr. Speaker, I withdraw, I withdraw unconditionally.
You are already doing it.
Where is it?
It's okay.
Honorable, where's Honorable Senior Prophet? Uh, Honorable Edward Bauer, you go on, when he comes, I'll get him to also withdraw his behavior. Go on.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I will continue by indicating that there's an example that the EC can, 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 can learn from. You recall in 2006, when the people's, uh, people's, uh, ROPA, when ROPA was passed, you recall that because of the consternation on the streets of Ghana, even though it became law and even the President assented to it, the Electoral Commission was cautious in implementing it because they knew that they needed the full cooperation of all the key players to be able to implement it. My appeal again to the Electoral Commissioner is that know that we want this country in one piece. That's all I can say, it's not a question.
Um, I, I expect, I expect Members, please, Honorable Senior Prophet, I expect Members, you know, the body language is even more effective than the words. The body language, when people watch us because they know we are representing them outside, they don't know the relationship we have built here. I know many of my friends to the left are good friends of those to the right and you display this outside the chamber. But when in the chamber you are talking and your fingers are pointing and you are doing this gesticulation, the people outside watching you, they get infuriated. Please, so please, honoreability involves a lot of things, you must manage your body language. That is why I want to, to apologize. No, control yourself first. No, control yourself first. Please. No, 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 please, please. It's a plea to you. Don't do that. He didn't ask any question, you are just making a contribution, but he went beyond bounds, but he has withdrawn, he has withdrawn the statement, so I, I accept that. So there's no question to you. Uh, can we go to Honorable Isaac Adongo?
Thank you very much, right, Honorable Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the Finance Minister has given us assurances, but we've gone past assurances now. The biggest problem in the room is the NIA. Go and fix NIA as a condition precedent to any conversation on CR. It's as simple as that, but I want to refer the Electoral Commissioner to her own CR. Ninety-one, particularly pay twenty-four. There's a schedule form one that she uses for guarantees. And it built in that is the oath system that she describes with the NIA as the robust. I'm surprised that she is not even taking care to look at her own document and I want to read the oath under it. Mr. Speaker, he says, "I solemnly swear or affirm that I know that, I know Mr., Mrs. and Mrs. is qualified to register as a voter at the above name registration center. I solemnly swear or affirm that I know that person is qualified to register as a voter at the above name registration center and should it come to reforce, I will bear the consequence."
Thank you.
This is an oath and for you, the EC to be now praising somebody else using the same method as a means of getting another thing done for you is unbelievable. Please take your time and read your CR before you mess us up. Mr. Speaker, I am surprised that the NIA has been telling us the number of people unregistered from eighteen and above, but the issue we are dealing with is eighteen and above. One of you up to this point not told us how many eighteen and above you are supposed to register and how many are outstanding, but you are busy telling us fifteen years, sixteen years and seventeen years. Mr. Speaker, I also remember that the EC boss said that if one ineligible registered voter enters the register, that is bad enough. I want to remind all of us that even Jesus Christ when he was selecting his disciples, Judas Iscariot is sleep proof and that it is not possible under the sun, not even the United States of America would develop hundred percent free food proof register. Please work with what you have. We spent one billion already, we are not ready under this mess and the difficulties that we have to spend another penny to put up a new register. Please spare us and deal with the problems that we have. Thank you very much.
I, I, I was clearly listening to Honorable Isaac Adongo and then he was quoting from the Bible. I was wondering where it was coming from because I know he's always against people quoting from the Bible.
Speaker, I'll pay royalties to the Finance Minister.
Well, the last from the left is coming from Honorable Clatus Avoca. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, is the, that limiting Ghanians to the national ID card for registration as a voter, coupled with limiting Ghanians to go to the district capital to register, will lead, the combined effect of these two will lead to people being disenfranchised under Article 42 of the Constitution because of the long distances of some people living thirty to fifty kilometers away from the district capital and not having access easily to the, the ID card. Wouldn't that amount to disenfranchising a lot of Ghanians? That's number one. Number two, Mr. Speaker, since the opposition, since the opposition to this ID, the registration system is very populous and overwhelming, coupled with the discontent, the frustration and the suffering in the country. When the EC give a learning, a listening ear to those huge Ghanians, population of Ghanians who are complaining and do the needful by making sure that the Garanta system coexists with the card system so that there will be peace and harmony in the country. Thank you. Well, as you all know, he was my former colleague, the three wise men, he was one of them. So he has asked very serious two questions, bordering on law. Yes, we'll now go to the right and we'll start with Honorable Ossei Nyaku.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to ask the EC Chair, if it is true that the Ghana card will be used to vote in 2024, that's the first one. The second question is, Mr. Speaker, I want to find out from the EC Chair, if the EC is going to compile a new register for the 2024 election, that's two question. I want to find out from the EC Chair, Mr. Speaker, from her presentation, he said the continuous registration by using the Ghana card is going to save this country some huge sums of amount. I want to find out if she will be able to give an indicative numbers, the cost, the amount of money or figures that this country is going to save. Last one, I want to find out from the EC if he has any plans of creating additional constituency and if not too, we should explain to the people of Ghana. Thank you.
Honorable Dan Bochui. Honorable Dan Bochui.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Honorable Speaker.
Right Honourable Speaker, I'm head of a new register and the Chairperson of the Electoral Commission, confirm that all the registered voters in the current register, twenty twenty, which they finally compiled in the twenty twenty elections, will have people who did not use Ghana card to register. While some of these people have to go and use Ghana card again to re-register. Or all those seventy million plus registered voters remain valid registered voters in the country. Right Honourable Speaker, the Electoral Commission, they have conducted limited registering exercises. When they do conduct limited, do they conduct limited registration exercises at polling stations? Is that what they have been doing? Thank you.
Honorable Samuel Abu Jinnapo.
Thank you, Right Honourable Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Regulation seven one G of twenty twelve, the National Identity Register Regulation. Mr. Speaker, and Article forty-five A and E of our National Constitution. Mr. Speaker, the combined effect of these two provisions vests the mandate in the Electoral Commission in what they seek to do. Mr. Speaker, if you permit me, you will recall that in nineteen ninety-two, when the Electoral Commission sought to introduce transparent ballot boxes, a section of the Ghanaian population opposed it. Mr. Speaker, in nineteen ninety-six, when the Electoral Commission sought to introduce photo ID, a section of the population gained. Mr. Speaker, in twenty twelve, in twenty twelve, when the Electoral Commission sought to introduce biometric registration, a section of the population opposed it again. Mr. Speaker, in twenty twenty, when the Electoral Commission sought to compile a new register, a section of the population took it to the Supreme Court. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, we all attest to the fact that these various interventions have helped to enhance transparency in our elections. Mr. Speaker, clearly, there is another opposition from a section of the Ghanaian population. So my question is, Mr. Speaker, on this occasion, what measures will the Chairperson of the Electoral Commission take to give confidence to our friends who seem to have opposed all the interventions to improve transparency in our elections? Mr. Speaker, my second question, Mr. Speaker, my second question is that it is trite knowledge that West African citizens register and get on the electoral roll of our country. There is absolutely no doubt about that. I think there's a sense of unanimity that West African nationals get on the electoral roll. Mr. Speaker, to what extent, to the Electoral Commission, to what extent will the, will the, will the passage of this new CI improve in making sure that Ghanaian electoral register is for Ghanaians and not for West Africans? Mr. Speaker, my final question goes to the NIA.
Your time is up, your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Your time is up. Honorable Sylvester Attete.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first question you go to the EC Chair. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask if the continuous registration will give the EC an additional administrative cost? And if it is, how much if she can tell us? Then the second one goes to the NIA. The mass registration exercise that was undertaken. I'm aware there are a number of cards that are the, uh, NIA that has not been distributed. What measures is it putting in place to ensure that people from the remotest part of the district are, who are not able to travel to the district capitals, get their cards? So that it saves them the cost and the hassle of coming to the district offices. What announcement after is that people should come to the district capitals? And these people were registered at the comfort of their homes or at the polling stations and they've not been given their cars as to speak. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The last person is Honorable Farouk Mahama. Honorable Farouk Mahama.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, according to the Electoral Commissioner in her presentation, she gave the assurance that the NIA would commence the card assurance with a matter of weeks and also encourage people to visit the sixteen district offices across the country. My question to the Commissioner is to find out the Electoral Commission and the NIA's logistical and financial, financial readiness to cover the outstanding Ghana cards that are to be issued and availability of funds ready for us to cover this exercise. Thank you very much.
Well, we've gone through the five-five. It's now time for the EC and the NIA to respond to your questions. I don't think any question was directed at the Ministry. Yes, we start again with the EC.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I think there was a question put to us, the EC, to the effect that under the CI ninety-one, the old CI that regulated elections, sorry, registrations, the guarantors swore an oath. And I'd like to emphasize that, yes, the guarantors swore an oath, but they did not swear the oath before a Commissioner for Oaths. They swore the oath before our district officers. So this, this does not, it's not, it doesn't strengthen the process like in the situation that we have with the NIA. So under the CI ninety-one, our guarantors do swear an oath, but they swear the oath before our district officers and not before a Commissioner for Oaths. And we cannot say that that is the same. I think swearing an oath before a Commissioner for Oaths carries a lot of weight. Swearing an oath before our district officer, you know, does not carry as much weight. And in the case of the, in the case of the NIA as well, the biometrics of the guarantor is attached to the applicant. We don't have that. In the case of the NIA, the, we don't have the system. I think it would be very costly to adopt a system where the biometrics of the guarantor is attached to the applicant. We don't have that. Us is not as robust as we mentioned. For you find that we are simply swearing the oath before the district officer. Whereas with the NIA, they swear before a Commissioner for Oaths. And the, the guarantor's details, the biometrics are attached to that of the applicant, making theirs more robust. I know the question has been said that we should adopt that. And I mean, if NIA is doing that and doing that successfully and we have been given the assurance that money will be released to ensure that the cards are printed and distributed, I see no reason why we should be, you know, emulating the same, you know, the same process. I think the question of, you know, that the, the NIA's inability to distribute cards is an issue of money. We have been assured this evening by the Minister for Finance that monies will be made available. So I, I believe that that should be able to solve the, the, the situation that we are in. Indeed, if as a commission, you know, the, the issues of the NIA went beyond money and there were issues beyond our reach and issues beyond our capability or the capability of the NIA, then we could, you know, think otherwise and move ahead in another direction. But we are all aware that these are issues, financial issues, and we have been assured by the Minister that finances will be made available. I think there was also another question as to whether we are putting up or we are preparing a new register. And I'd like to assure this Honourable House that the Commission does not intend to prepare a new register. What we are doing through the continuous registration is to simply, you know, update the register. And by bringing on board persons who are eighteen years of age or persons who are registered. So we'd like to assure the Honourable House that we are not seeking to prepare a new register. I think there was a question about the steps we would take to convince, you know, the minority as to the, you know, the credibility of, you know, this policy or as to the effectiveness and efficiency of this policy. I think this policy of eliminating the guarantor system and using the Ghana card would ensure the integrity and credibility of our register. We are all aware that many minors, you know, and foreigners use the door of the guarantor to come onto our system. Therefore, by eliminating the guarantor system, we'll be reading our minors of, our register, sorry, by eliminating the guarantor system, we'll be reading our, our register of minors and foreigners. And it would ensure the integrity of the register and ultimately ensure the credibility of our elections. I think there was also a question of disenfranchising of citizens because of the continuous registration and the non-availability of the cards. We do recognize that as we speak, the... We do recognize that as we speak, we do not have, you know, the cards available. The NIA has, has however assured us that they have three point five million cards in a bonded warehouse in Ghana and that with funds, they would be able to access those cards. This evening, the Minister for Finance has assured us that he will provide a further, or he has paid a further twenty million to add up to the eighty million already paid to the NIA. And the NIA has assured us that their partners will release their funds to them as a result of these payments. So we do not envisage disenfranchising citizens. More so, the, the, the exercise, the exercise we are running is a continuous exercise. I did emphasize that had we been planning to engage in the limited registration exercise whereby we earmark a period, let's say, three weeks for the limited registration process, that could lead to disenfranchising of citizens. Under the current system, it is a continuous registration exercise. As such, if you do not have the Ghana card today, you could go and apply for it and you could have it tomorrow and it will enable you to, you know, register to vote. We have all the way until twenty twenty-four. We are not closing the register today. And I think the plan is to continue this registration well until the last quarter, I think sometime in October twenty twenty-four, before we, we close the system. So we have a good, you know, eighteen months plus to enable our citizens register. And that is good, that is good time, considering the fact that in the past we have had very limited registration processes spanning a period of three to four weeks at the most. So I'd like to assure the House that because we have, the system we have in place is continuous. You know, if you do not have a card today, you can access one tomorrow and we are assured that money has been released, the cards are in the bonded warehouse. They will be released to the NIA. And therefore, NIA will be able to initiate the process of printing and issuing cards to citizens. This way, accesses the NIA card can simply walk into the EC's office and to register to vote. Thank you. I think there was a question, the last question came from the majority side. And the question was, what in the current CI are we seeking to cure? And I'd like to emphasize that what we are seeking to cure is having minors and foreigners on our roll. I think this is the biggest issue that we are seeking to cure by this new CI. And what we are saying is that no longer should, you know, we use a guarantor system that enables minors and foreigners to come on the roll. And that's why we are eliminating it. And we believe that by using the Ghana card, which is a more robust form of identification, we would be eliminating to a large extent minors and foreigners on our roll. Thank you. I'm sorry, I think there was also the question about, you know, the registration taking place at our district offices. And the, the question was that by so doing, people would not be able to identify their polling stations and so on. But in twenty twenty, if you recall, we did hold registration in the district offices. We held registration in all our district offices nationwide for vulnerable groups. And by vulnerable groups, I'm referring to pregnant women, persons with disability and persons who were sixty years and above. And they were registered at the district offices. A facility was made available for them to register at the district office. And they were registered at the polling station. You know, what happens is that the officer would seek to know where a person resides and will situate that person in the closest polling station near the person's residence. So it has happened before. And in past limited registration exercises, it was not done at the polling station level. It was done on electoral area basis and was also done at the district offices, the district offices of the Electoral Commission. And nobody was misplaced. So we are confident that, you know, nobody will be misplaced if we do it at the, at the district offices. Additionally, the law says that the EC may designate other centers. And so we've emphasized that where the district offices are difficult to reach, we will designate other centers which are closer to the people to enable them, you know, go there to go and register to vote. Thank you. Honorable Members, please refer to Regulation two. That speaks about... Honorable Members, please refer to Regulation two of the new CI. It talks about designation of registration centers. Two one B. Two one B. It says that the Commission shall designate as a registration center, a district office of the Commission and any other place that the Commission considers appropriate. And therefore, where we have difficulty, where there is difficulty in reaching a district office, the Commission, in its own interest, because it is in our interest to ensure that every eligible voter is on the roll, will designate centers that are easily accessible to the citizenry. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, you see, the EC on the eve of the twenty twenty elections issued a statement and deprived a group of people from voting. So we don't trust what we are saying. Put, put this in the law. After that tomorrow, you tell us that a group of people will not be registered. Put it in the law. We don't trust what we are seeing. Put it on paper. Mr. Speaker.
Yes, I think there was a question from Honorable Dan Bautry to the effect that would persons who registered in twenty twenty using the passport? I think there was a question from Honorable Dan Bautry to the... I think there was a question from Honorable Dambotrey to the effect that would persons who registered in twenty twenty using, you know, the passport or coming through the guarantor system, would these persons be eliminated from the current register simply because they did not use the Ghana card? And I'd like to assure the honourable house that they would not be eliminated. They are legitimate citizens on the road because in, under the law, as you know, you know, in twenty twenty, they were allowed to register to vote using their passport or coming through the guarantor. They are on the road, they will not be taken off the road. Thank you. And with the question of savings, I think we have a rough estimate. The, I think the question was asked as to how much would be saved using the continuous registration exercise. And I'd like to emphasize that under the continuous registration exercise, we will be using our own staff. We indicated at the start of this discussion that we want to mainstream the continuous registration as part of our activities. As such, we will not be relying on external staff, but we will be using our own staff to perform this function on a day-to-day basis as part of their daily functions. And from a rest, a rough estimate, we would be saving the country some forty million CDs. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for the opportunity. There was a question from Honorable Silver Satete wanting to know if there are any additional measures NIA will institute to ensure that cards of applicants that have not been distributed to them are distributed. Mr. Speaker, there are two sides to this question. During the mass registration exercise, we use the, most of the last polling stations used by the EC as our registration centers. So we're all over the place. In the post-mass registration period, we are required to establish regional and district offices in order to provide continuous registration services. And that's what we have done since November twenty twenty one. In the circumstances, it is not possible, given our human and material resources, to go back to all those communities in order to issue the cards to them. However, there are a number of MPs, a number of DCs and MMDCs who are willing to support the card issuance process by the National Identification Authority. And I know that my good friend, Honorable Roxanne Nelson Daphia Mekor has been on my back asking for that service. And I know that in Pungkatamanso, as we speak, card issuance is taking place because our officers are going to the field, engaging with the community leaders, getting resources from them and trying to use market days and plug into the local calendars of the people in order to take advantage of their clustered persons to issue cards. Mr. Speaker, we will deepen that effort. We will issue it as a service instruction to our regional and district offices. The good Colonel Retired Peter Kwame Gansa here, who is the head of operations, has already been engaging our field offices in that regard. We will deepen that effort and ensure that, to the extent possible, these unissued cards are issued. But, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to also use this opportunity to call on honourable members to continue to assist us in that regard, those who can make transportation or other logistical arrangements available with and through our district and regional offices to do that and to encourage people to go for the cards because it is really not possible for us to go to each and every one of the communities that we serve. But as and when they go to the districts to go for the cards. Mr. Speaker, I think that was the only question from this round that applies to NIA. I thank you for your attention.
Honourable members, I'm guided by leadership to permit one from each side, one from the minority side. That's the minority leader? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, first, it is surprising to note that the Electoral Commission and the National Identification Authority and the Ministry of Finance, they are calling on us to accept assurances from them and to base on those assurances, pass a constitutional instrument. Mr. Speaker, we can't accept that. They have said in their own submissions that there's a long way from now to the next election. We contend that first, they should go and solve the problems they are aware of first and then they will bring the CI for us to consider. But until that time, we can't take assurances and use those assurances and make a law. No way, we can't do that. Mr. Speaker, I say this because there are two documents before us. First, the EC herself, in her statement to Parliament, paragraph, page ten, paragraph four of page ten, Mr. Speaker, I read, she says, "Also, we call on the National Identification Authority to accelerate the pace of the printing of the Ghana card, to make it easy for anyone who is interested in registering with us to do so." Mr. Speaker, that is an admission, page ten, page ten, in the EC's document. That is an admission of the fact that the National Identification Authority will need to do some work before it will be possible for an ordinary Ghanaian of voting age be able to register.
Your colleague is up, yes, please.
Mr. Speaker, we have a document that's been given to us by the Electoral Commission. Now, the material parts that my colleague is quoting from, they have canceled it out. Mr. Speaker, that is it. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, they, they... He did not, she did not read it. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, it is quite unfortunate. It is quite unfortunate that somebody presents a document to you, a material part, it says, "I shouldn't have submitted that to you." Ordinarily, Mr. Speaker, if they were going to submit this paper to us later on, they would have edited that portion out of it. So, so it is incredulous. It is incredulous for the minority leader to get up and quote a statement, a statement that has been declared from the document. This is most unfortunate. It's most unfortunate of a minority leader, a document that has been given to us and the person tells you that this is edited out and you are quoting it. That's most unfortunate. That is most unfortunate.
Stay worried. Yes, minority leader.
Mr. Speaker, this document was given to us by the Electoral Commissioner herself. Mr. Speaker, is it that it was canceled when she came to the chamber? Or at what point did they cancel this, this, this part? Mr. Speaker, the fact still remains, the fact still remains that the document that was presented to us, page ten, paragraph four, says that the NIA needs to accelerate the pace of the printing of Ghana cards to make it easy for anyone who is interested in registering with us to do so. Mr. Speaker, that is a fact. Mr. Speaker, secondly, secondly, there is a document before us, the report of the Special Budget Committee of the briefing session of the draft Public Elections Regulations, Public Elections Regulations twenty twenty two and other related matters. Mr. Speaker, in that document, that was signed by the Majority Leader himself, the Honourable Ossete Chairman Saboosu. Mr. Speaker, I refer you, I refer you to page eleven. But, Mr. Speaker, to start with, let me refer you to before page, page eleven, to the conclusions of the statement, page eleven. Mr. Speaker, it says, "However, the committee would like to stress that it is not accepted, it is not, it will not accept and would reject any effort that GAT towards making the EC use the Ghana card as the only medium to qualify a person who is eligible to vote in twenty twenty four election." It goes on to say that this is premised on the fact that indeed Ghana has come of age and can boost off a credible national identification card to transact business with. However, even in the face of a number of identification options given in the past and even in the operations of the National Identification Authority, some citizens are unable to register for the national card due to, due to the existence of serious challenges the authority is confronted with. It is clear that unless and until the challenges confronting the issuance of the Ghana card are dealt with, using the Ghana card as the only medium of voter registration would negatively impact on the electoral roll and thereby deny some otherwise qualified persons from registering to vote. Mr. Speaker, this is a statement signed by the Majority Leader himself. This is signed by the Majority Leader himself. It is not coming from us. This is the report of the committee, of the committee of a special budget that has been adopted by us. Mr. Speaker, we cannot take assurances as the basis for us to have a Ghana card. We still have time. Let them go and solve the issues relating to the issuance of the Ghana card first. Until then, Mr. Speaker, we are sorry to say that we cannot be part of that. We cannot be part of that. Mr. Speaker, secondly, Mr. Speaker, secondly, secondly, we are aware that the Ministry of Finance and the government owes the service provider one hundred and seventeen million dollars, one hundred and seventeen million dollars. Aside that, the National Identification Authority themselves have said here today that they have financial challenges, financial challenges. The government, the Minister of Finance, in his statement said they will release money at appropriate time. We don't know when the appropriate time will be. Mr. Speaker, as we speak today, government is unable to pay for salaries, salaries. In fact, if you check Bank of Ghana, Ghana Commercial Bank Twitter page today, now, now, you can check now, they said they are able to pay salaries. So if you are unable to pay salaries, how can we take assurances that you are ready to pay one hundred and seventeen million dollars? Mr. Speaker, I can read it, I'll be here, I'll be here. So, so what is the basis? You can't pay salaries. And if you can't pay salaries, how can we take that assurances as basis for you to make a law? Go and pay first. Let's make sure that the ordinary Ghanaian at the minimum, at the minimum can get access to the Ghana card. Mr. Speaker, another important point, another important point, Mr. Speaker. If you look at Article forty two, Article forty two requires evidence of citizenship, evidence of citizenship and not evidence of identification and not evidence of identification. Evidence of citizenship can be that my parent, I was born Ghanaian by birth. I did not have to choose to be a Ghanaian. My parent gave birth to me as Ghanaian and so my parents must have the right to vouch for me that I'm a Ghanaian. Must have the right to vouch for me as a Ghanaian and not only using national identification card. Mr. Speaker, passport can be another identity for identifying me as a Ghanaian. And so it is wrong for the National Electoral Commission to say that they are using only the Ghana card. Mr. Speaker, our position is simple. To start with, they cannot use only the Ghana card as the basis of registration. They cannot. And if they will have to use the Ghana card as the basis of registration, we demand an independent verification of the numbers that the National Identification Authority has put out there. Independent verification. Because, Mr. Speaker, we can't vouch for these numbers. We need to go to our constituencies to find out whether the numbers they are giving to us are adequate or not for us to reconcile those data. And it is only right for us to request for an independent validation so that an independent body will say that, yes, Ghana has reached the time that we can use Ghana card as the sole identification for registration to vote. Until that time, Mr. Speaker, we will beg to say that we will not accept this. We will stand firm, we will oppose it and we will carry it through. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority chief.
Speaker, with respect, I paid attention and heard my colleague, the minority leader, we were all here when the Finance Minister addressed this house. And he, he made copious reference to what the Finance Minister said. It is important that when you are quoting the Finance Minister, you quote him right. On the funding, we are on the funding, the Finance Minister said, some eighty million had already been advanced and there is an outstanding twenty million. And he said, he said he is ready to produce evidence of the payment of the outstanding twenty million. What has that got to do with salaries? I'm asking you, what has that got to do with salaries? Don't impugn negativity to the Finance Minister. What? He never, the Finance Minister, he never spoke to any outstanding salaries. And, Speaker, I want to draw this to him and he should, he should be guided accordingly. Be guided accordingly. He never spoke about unpaid salaries. The twenty million, he said he has paid the twenty million and he is ready to produce evidence. You will listen.
Majority leader.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Mr. Speaker, I think that the exercise that the House is engaged in is to try to build common ground, build consensus on the way forward before the Electoral Commission comes to introduce the CI that we are talking about. Mr. Speaker, my colleague, the minority leader, in ending his own submission, gave a strong indication that if the issues that they have raised are not attended to, then they will oppose it and carry through their opposition. I don't know what he means by that. They are trying to build consensus. We are trying to build consensus. But, Mr. Speaker, the bottom line is, nobody in this House can prevent the government from presenting its business to this House. Nobody can do that. Let me state that emphatically, absolutely no bodies can do that. Mr. Speaker, and that is for the avoidance of doubt. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker.
He said you can't prevent, that's what...
Mr. Speaker.
He said you can't prevent.
It doesn't carry, it doesn't relay. It doesn't carry, it doesn't really have to agitate the minds of people to stand up and be engaging in wild gesticulations. Let me call, Mr. Speaker. What we do here involves brain and not brawn. Brain and not brawn. The speaker. The speaker. Now, I think there are outstanding issues. There are outstanding issues to attend to really relate to some of the issues that my colleagues have spoken to. The speaker, we should be asking, we should be asking the chief executive or the executive secretary of the N I A, what is the material difference between the vouching or guarantor system that you are engaged in and that of the Electoral Commission? This is for an avoidance of doubt question because we keep moving forward and backwards on this. And people want to be very sure what really is the material difference between what you are doing and what the Electoral Commission is doing. Number two, the chairman. The N I A has spoken to the high integrity of their database, which according to them shall eliminate voter fraud. The chairman, I want to know how true is it that in reconciling information on passports that were submitted to the N I A for purposes of registering to obtain the Ghana card, the N I A has detected that there are several hundreds of passports, indeed thousands of passports that people submitted to procure Ghana cards that bear the same identification number. How true is that? The, the chairman, also for those who submitted the original voters' ID cards, that is the cards that were not based on the Ghana cards. My information is that, um, in attempting to reconcile, it's come out that some of the voters' ID cards in the system bear the same identification number. Would that mean that there are suspicious cards that are already in the system? How true is that? Mr. Chairman, the, the National Identity Register Regulations 2012, L I two one one, that was passed by this house in 2012. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that the matter relating to, the matter relating to, um, the, the relevant provision, that is seven, seven one G. I believe we should, we should explain it better than has been done thus far because of the confusion that was generated by my colleague, Yanabo Roxen Bafiamoko. When he quoted the, the instrument, the regulation, seven one provides that a national identity card issued to an individual shall be used for the following transactions where identification is required. And then G says, um, J says, the registration of voters. So before you submit yourself for registration, if you have a national identity card, that is a vehicle to establish your Ghanaianness. That's the import of this. That is the import of this. And I'm surprised you are putting so many things on this. I'm surprised, I'm surprised you are trying to confuse the general public because the interpretation that you are giving to it is totally wrong. It's totally wrong. Mr. Chairman, obviously, from the face of this, any student of law should understand this. So the interpretation that is being given by my colleague is totally wrong. The speaker, now, the, the minority leader concluded his admission quoting the, the reports of the Special Budget Committee that I, that I, uh, sent it to. Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, the minority leader was not here last day when we were debating this. If you were here, I explained copiously in a sense. The speaker, listen to this, let me, let me call this for the avoidance of doubt. And Yanabo James, James Kuchia, when I'm on the floor, you are, you are offing. So what are you, what are you going to do? What are you, what are you doing? Anytime you're on the floor, he is throwing up his left hand, making wild gesticulations. I don't do that to you. And the speaker has spoken to this, well, you've been a leader before. I think that is the veil of reckless heckling that my deputy, the deputy leader has always been referring to. It's not right. It's not right. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I was referring to the, the interpretation that's been given to the.
Majority Leader.
Page eleven.
Since you mentioned the former deputy minority leader, he has to say, so let me listen to him.
The speaker, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman, I thank you very much. I think that the, the leader, the leader of the House has completely understood what I did. The speaker, we've been sitting for long and my arms were, forgive me, I was stretching my arms like this. Stretching my arms like this. The speaker, that, he thought that I was talking to him. I wasn't talking to you. I was not talking to you. I was just stretching my hands. So, so, so the point he made against me, now, pull the gas to me. Because I was talking to him, I was just stretching my hands.
Honorable members, you see the body language and the interpretations put on the body language. That's why I say you must control your bodies. Yes, Majority Leader, go on.
The, the speaker. The speaker, there are many people in this chamber who saw the conduct of my colleague. And he's telling us that he was stretching. We will take it as that. Have you seen him now? Are you still stretching? Now, it's your right hand side, your right hand, are you still stretching? But, Mr. Speaker, on a much more serious point, my colleague completely misunderstood paragraph two of page eleven. It reads, it reads, however, the, some committee members stressed that it will not, it will not accept and will reject any effort that is geared towards making the E C use the Ghana card as the only medium, as the only medium to qualify a person who is eligible to vote in 2024. Who is qualified, who is eligible to vote in 2024. The speaker, it, it's not about registration, about voting. And it was said that we will not allow a situation where for 2024, the voting will be restricted only to people bearing Ghana card. What it means is that if we go that route, it will mean that those of them who have already registered to vote without recourse to Ghana card will then be disaffiliated. That's the import of this. I'm sorry, the, uh, Yanabo Ericoko could raise the issue and it was explained to him. The minority leader has gone on the same tangent. And this is so explanatory.
Why are you arguing?
What, what, what you are saying now, over. Speak to the mic so people will hear you. That what you are saying now, over. The speaker, so you see where, where it's coming from. You see where the issue is coming from. Anyway, so that's the import of this. So, Mr. Speaker, it cannot be right, the allegation that they are, they are, they are throwing about. But, Mr. Speaker, I think we all want to better understand. It, we all want to better understand what the E C wants to do. If there are real issues, let's attend to them. But thus far, all the matters that have come, the speaker, clearly, clearly are not matters that anybody can use to stop the Commission from introducing this here. Clearly. But if there are, if there are challenges, please let us come back. Let's relate to them. And thus far, what's, what's been purveyed, what's been purveyed thus far, the speaker, with the greatest respect, doesn't really wash. And I believe we can make progress. We can make progress having listened to them and make good progress. The speaker, thank you very much.
Honorable members, I think the Minister of Finance deserved to be heard. A number of issues were raised and I, I think that it's, it's proper to give him the opportunity to respond to those issues. So let's listen now to the Minister for Finance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for, for this opportunity. As I listened to the minority leader, I couldn't help but to remember one of, um, quotations in a literature book that we read, which was Macbeth. And really, to listen to a former deputy minister invoking such passion. And the quotation was said, just saying, "Statement full of sound and fury, signifying nothing." Mr. Speaker, the minority, the minority leader just got, um, a tweet from maybe G C B indicating that there had been some data challenges of salary processing. And in his own way, what we call terminological inexactitude is interpreting that as the Republic of Ghana not having money to pay salaries. That is wrong and that is disingenuous. And we should not allow that to be perpetuated. Secondly, Mr. Speaker, the deputy, former deputy minister should know that when we have debts or liabilities, we do sit down to make payment, payment arrangements. So yes, it is true that there's hundred and seventeen million dollars that have to be paid. We have made payment arrangements with Cow Merchant Bank, which is accepted. And that process is going through. The first part of it, Mr. Speaker, is a hundred million that we have talked about, of which, cities, of which eighty million has been paid and twenty million is also being paid. Mr. Speaker, we have agreed to a process of payment which the bank has agreed to, which will then enable those cards to be released and for the purpose of the work that has been done. We should really watch how we articulate issues, avoid what we call terminological inexactitude, misinterpretation, leading the country into this type of unnecessary, um, anxiety. So this was once again a story full of sound and fury, signifying nothing and creating unnecessary discomfort in this country. Mr. Speaker, we'll be able to fulfill the obligations that we have with Cow Merchant Bank and we have assurances for that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Minister, in, in his submission, mentioned my name and it's important for me to clarify this point. The speaker, it is a fact and the minister has agreed to the fact that they owe the National Identification Authority, the service provider of the National Identification Authority, one hundred and seventeen million dollars. If you express it at thirteen cities, even fourteen cities, one point four billion Ghana cities. At twelve cities, one point four billion cities. However, as we speak, he has confirmed that he's paid eighty million. Okay, hundred, granted hundred million. So if you've paid hundred million out of one point four billion, we still have an outstanding of one point three billion cities. One point three billion cities. The assurances that the minister has given to me is not good enough. The speaker, for me to be convinced and support the passage of a C I law that seeks to, that seeks to make the ident- National Identification Card as the sole identification for registration. And my position is simple. Until, until that is done and all of us can bear this testimony and there's evidence and an independent validation has been done, we cannot, we cannot be able to support that. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I've heard the minority leader again. Minority leader is aware that Cowbank is the contractor that we have negotiated here. As long as Cowbank is satisfied with the basis for which we will pay, that is what we should stick to. Cowbank has control of the cards. Cowbank has agreed to the payment terms and therefore says they'll release the cards as long as we follow the payment terms. So what other assurance do we need if the person who is in possession of releasing the cards has agreed to a plan? That's a very different issue, you know?
Honorable members, I think we have come to the end of the consultation. As I stated from the very beginning, this is part of the pre-laying consultations and that is with Parliament. Honorable members, so we've come to the end of the consultation of the three, of the three institutions with Parliament. The Committee of the Whole will submit a report on this consultation to plenary session. Definitely, I'll be signing the report as the chair of this meeting. I'm sure you will not be compelling me to do it within a day because that would not be possible. But my secretariat will work assiduously at it and as soon as possible will submit the report to plenary. Now, you know the procedure of a report from the Committee of the Whole and that is what we will adopt. It's not going to be anything new. And so I want to, on your behalf, thank the august personalities we invited here, the Minister for Finance and our own deputy minister for responding to our invitation. I also want, on your behalf, to thank the chairperson of the Electoral Commission and the deputy, together with the technical staff. And the last but not the least, the Executive Secretary of the National Identification Authority. And the last but not the least, the Executive Secretary of the National Identification Authority, together with the technical directors. I think we are extremely grateful. You've given some explanation. Not all of us are satisfied with the explanation. That definitely is part of democracy. So we'll go on, we'll submit the report and you'll definitely hear from us. Honorable members, with this, I want to, Majority Leader, in a, in, Mr. Speaker, I know we have to recline to plenary for you to take an adjournment. But before you bring the curtain down on this, the, given where we are and the fact that the CI has some time bound, where we are now, about quarter to eight, it would not be possible to generate the report tomorrow for you to go through, for it to be late. So certainly tomorrow will be out. My prayer is that, my prayer is that the report will be submitted to this house by Thursday after this. My task is whether for us to move forward. Mr. Speaker, as you said, this is just pre-laying consultation. It's pre-laying consultation. So that is it. It's just a prayer. Practically it will be difficult to do it tomorrow and against that, given the fact that time is of the essence for the CI. And thank you.
Mr. Speaker, over speeding can kill.
Chief Executive of the South of the NI has made it clear here that there is an information constituency-specific data that he's going to provide to this house. If you are saying that a report to be generated tomorrow, how are you going to get it? Put that one aside. Mr. Speaker, he said, he said by Thursday. Today is Tuesday. Tomorrow is Wednesday. If he brings that report constituency-specific data by Wednesday or by Thursday.
I have to take it to my constituency.
On the weekends, members complained and that is why, Mr. Speaker, I was agitating to speak, even though I didn't get opportunity. Members' complaint is that they go to their constituency offices and some are denied of the information. Those who are giving, if they cross-check with the one that is given here, there are great disparities. Because of those discrepancies and disparities, Mr. Speaker, we should not over speed in this and that is why we are engaging. Mr. Speaker, we know that in September, the electoral commission is going to organize, assemble many elections, in September. So we should not be thinking that, oh, this is time bound and this is, and this is this. If leader, you are saying there is time bound and she has to work to be within time. She can be using CI 91. Why we organize ourselves well? Mr. Speaker, I started by saying that we are representing people who, we need to take input from Institute of Economic Affairs, where Madame Jamesa used to be. We need to take input from CDD. We need to take input from Freddie Herbert Foundation and other development partners who are in our democracy. So we should not just over speed thinking that we just have to generate reports, come and let CI enter registration. No, leader, even the payment plan that the minority leader is requesting the Minister for Finance to provide, that payment plan must be brought here. Mr. Speaker, even the, Mr. Speaker, even the National Democratic Congress, NDC, that was not invited to the IPAC meeting that drafted this CI, not be invited. So we cannot over speed in this. Over speeding can kill. Mr. Speaker, I resent this.
Mr. Speaker, I have, I have come through a rulebook and I was looking for the orders on pre-laying. After listening to the minority leader, he said that they wouldn't be part of the process of laying of this year and that they are opposed. Mr. Speaker, I would want to draw the attention of the minority leader and his group on order And I would want him and his colleagues to open to page 110. That is where the order is, 166. Mr. Speaker, there is a committee, there is a committee in charge of this process. But as a house, we have by convention adopted this pre-laying practice to enable us both consensus. Mr. Speaker, that is not to take away the functions and the mandate of the committee. And Honorable Ayeni, who is part of the committee and is in leadership of the committee, knows about what I'm talking about. Ahmed, when you're on your feet, I sat down, let me finish. This is the impatience you are giving. You sit down, sit down. Sit down, when I finish. Ahmed, you are in leadership, just sit down quietly. When you shout, your, your, your backbenchers follow your bad example. Mr. Speaker, this is, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, this is a view. Mr. Speaker, when one man, Mr. Speaker, when one man speaks, thousand men are crying. Why? Mr. Speaker, I read order 166. I read order 166. There shall be a committee on subsidiary legislation, which shall consist of not more than 25 members. If you keep quiet, we can all learn. So keep quiet. If you keep quiet and you listen, you can make a meaningful input. If you disagree with me, catch Mr. Speaker's attention. Oh, that, oh, open your mouth, Blaka. The means of catching his eye is to shout. At least pass on a note to Mr. Speaker. He will listen to you. So sit down. Mr. Speaker, if you read order 166, 12.
Honorable, honorable deputy majority leader, resume your seat.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Honorable members, it's a prayer from the majority leader that we should, as much as possible, submit the report by Thursday. That is a prayer from him. I pray that God will answer his prayer. As I stated earlier on, I'll be signing the report of the committee of the whole. Now, when you read our standing orders, you see that the committee of the whole can only be found in the definition section. If you go to the body of the standing orders, you not get Ovishi talking about the committee of the whole. And so practice, practice that we have developed all these things. And practice is a key part of our procedure. And so we'll work on that and you'll hear from us. With this, I want to plead with all of you to at least calm your nerves, have cool hairs. At the end of the day, we are all looking for the good of Mother Ghana. And we all try to do what is right for Ghanaians. So please, let's try and respect each other, have confidence in each other. Let's try to create trust or else we cannot work together. We cannot. And Ghanaians are looking up to us for leadership. If we can't work together, we cannot lead them. I keep on saying that we refer to this place as a house, a house, a family. And we must continue to work together. And ours is not like the British House of Commons. Ours is arranged in such a way that we always aim at building consensus. Theirs is opposition and government. Ours is majority and minority. So please, it's not the same. I can give you all the time to be trading your invectives and all those things. At the end of the day, what will Ghana gain from it? Only heat, only heat. And it's not for us to heat up the country. Nigeria has just finished their elections. Have they finished at all? They are still counting. You are hearing, you are hearing, you are hearing allegations. You are hearing allegations that even a system they put in place, the system was not followed. Those are allegations. So please, what we need to do is to be able to build integrity, integrity. You can put a system in place, but on the D-Day, the system will not be followed. So it's not just systems, it's not equipment, it's not laws, it's the quality of the human resource. I keep on hammering on this. And we will need to build that together. We need to build that together. So please, give the chairman and the secretariat time to submit the report and we'll do so. We are aware of the timelines. We are aware of the timelines. We are aware of the pending elections in September and we know the 21 sitting days rule for the CI. We know that. And as I said, when I was chairman of the subsidiary legislation committee, some of you were not even born, some of you here, you are not born. I'm not sure you were born. Yes, so please, let's end it here today and I want to thank all of you for at least the endurance. We have stayed up to about, it's nine o'clock, eight, eight o'clock, eight in the night. And I need to commend all of you because the numbers are still very, very good. The numbers are still very, very good. It meant that you're taking the exercise seriously and as the speaker, I endorse that. So I thank all of you and we will now reconstitute the house into a plenary session so that we can end up the business of the day. With this, I thank all of you and please, please, I will dissolve the committee of the whole. Honorable members, resume your seats. Please resume your seats. I think you are now comfortably in my hands so I can proceed to adjourn proceedings. Yes.
Mr. Speaker, I'm grateful. Mr. Speaker, just before the suspenders said to constitute the committee of the whole, my name was mentioned several. I stood up, but I didn't catch your, your eye. Mr. Speaker, you agree with me that the committee of the world was very, very successful. It was successful because all the important stakeholders, I mean stakeholders, were present and we had a very copious discussion. I thought those of us who insisted that the EC boss should be around would have even been given some kind of, kind of commendation. Mr. Speaker, I, I, I heard that, that the MP for Bolhebamboy was one of those who made an attempt to disrupt sitting. Mr. Speaker, if there was anybody who made an attempt to distract sitting, it was Honorable Adalde, Honorable Adalde Stood from his seat and walked directly to the IT officers and instructed them that they should go ahead to do the presentation. When the chairman sat here, hadn't directed anybody to do that. Some of us resisted that there was a need for us to respect the chairman and so it was not coming from the chairman to do that. So, Mr. Speaker, let it be on record that if there was anybody who made an attempt to disrupt, to disrupt sitting, then, Mr. Speaker, it was Honorable Adalde. Mr. Speaker, unfortunately, unfortunately, some recordings or some video was done and I thought that it would have been fair, two of us would have been videoed. I didn't see that and that is my worry. To conclude, Mr. Speaker, I want to tell you that today, I am one of the happiest person because at the end of the day, we've got this EC boss here to be part of this very important year. At the end of the day, we are building consensus to ensure that the registered become eligible. I thank you for this opportunity.
First, first deputy speaker. Please, let's, let's listen to the first deputy speaker.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much for this opportunity. Mr. Speaker, I thought that you were bringing proceedings to a close. Some matters, everybody has spoken about them, we had forgotten about them. But when the Honorable Member for Bolhebamboy chose to misrepresent the fact, I think it is appropriate that the record is corrected. Mr. Speaker, I do not doubt that the Honorable Member for Bolhebamboy intended that the EC chairperson should be here before proceedings go close. But, Mr. Speaker, none of us is entitled to use unparliamentary processes.
Mr Speaker, it was totally inappropriate for the Honorable Member for Bolibamboy, the Member for Tamale North and the Honorable Member for Bongo, Bongga East, to walk from their seat, plus, and to physically dismantle the systems that had been set up. Mr Speaker, I recorded every activity. I show them to you. If they want them to be played on the screen, I still have the information here. You can be sure to see that the members I have mentioned were actually those who disrupted the proceedings. It was out of frustration. It was out of frustration to try and bring proceedings under control that I asked them to shut up. I did, that was totally unparliamentary. But, Mr Speaker, that is how, that is how they have responded. And, Mr Speaker, the record must reflect that these four persons, it have become their modus operandi. In fact, Bolibamboy, I told him that I did not know him to be part of the disruptors. So I was embarrassed. I was embarrassed when I saw him as part. But the other members, like Bongo, like Tamale North, like Bongga, they have been doing that, Mr Speaker. And I insist that they, and unfortunately plus Bolibamboy, they bring proceedings to a close by their misconduct and not the honorable. I asked, I asked, Mr Speaker, because they were using the desk here, I sat at where the Honorable Member for Mensah was sitting. So it was from there that I instructed the EC to start proceedings. At no point, the Honorable Member for Isan, the Chief Whip, come into the, into the picture at all. I asked them to proceed. And it is these four who crossed over here and came to physically remove the equipment. Mr Speaker, now the record should reflect. I thank you, sir.
Right, Honorable Speaker, we were all in the chamber on Thursday. We witnessed what happened. What my colleague was saying was basically to say that if we were to agree to allowing the EC Chair to come today, as he's come here, to do the presentation to us, there would have been no need for us to have that rank cross relationship. Mr Speaker, I was here. What we witnessed in the chamber was not a one-sided situation. It was on both sides. It is very, very sad that one side keep mentioning individual's names. That is not right. When you have a situation where there was almost a rank cross situation in the, in the, in the chamber and you want to single out individuals and be mentioning their names into the, into the record. Mr Speaker, yes, the first Deputy Speaker admitted that he used an unparliamentary language. That is also part of the reason that the place got rank cross. Mr Speaker, I can tell you that it was when he said shut up that the people reacted. So, Mr Speaker, it should never, and then he used the word that, that disruptors. Mr Speaker, I am not aware of the disruptors in this house. I am not aware of the disruptors in this house. So, Mr Speaker, it's a dangerous precedence, he's a deputy, a first Deputy Speaker. If he begins to mention names of colleagues, that goes in the record as disruptors, Mr Speaker. And then the next day, we also begin to label people on the other side, Mr Speaker. The consensus you are asking us to build may not be here. So, Mr Speaker, I feel what happened on Thursday is not, is not, is not, is not helpful. But I would urge, Mr Speaker, to direct that the situation where the respected first Deputy Speaker attempted to label some people disruptors and mention their names should be explained from the record. It must be explained from the record unless we can agree that what he's saying is the fact. Because, as a matter of fact, I am not aware that anybody decided to cause any disruption. And I can tell you that the, the, the reaction came when he used the word shut up. And if he can agree that he used the word shut up, then he can agree that it was a reason the reaction came from this side. So, and so, that is the case, Mr Speaker. So I don't agree that we should, we should, we should go on this, we can move on. And we should not go back because when my colleague was speaking, he didn't mention anybody's name, he just said the, the, the whip. The whip had a right to actually talk, talk about that, but he didn't mention any other person, Mr Speaker. We can make progress, but this attempt to label some of my colleagues as disruptors is not right, Mr Speaker, and we should not tolerate it, Mr Speaker.
Yes, Majority Leader. Mr Speaker, we must all admit that what happened last Thursday, certainly wasn't the best. And we should do everything in order that we don't have a repeat of it. My little worry from what is being attributed to as the genesis of it. Mr Speaker, we're in the committee sitting. Of course, you know that in committee sittings, the rules are relaxed somewhat. We want to build consensus at committee sitting, but every now and then, maybe we use, we go out of turn a bit. And if my colleague is saying that the use of that statement, shut up, is unprecedented, I disagree with him and he knows that it's not right. What he said, the first Deputy Speaker said, was uttered in a committee sitting where, as I'm saying, occasionally we relax the rules a bit. Yes, I must say that as human as he is, maybe he, he, he got agitated somewhat. He got a bit agitated because of the reactions from some colleagues. But I will say, for the record, that the right Honorable Speaker presiding in the chair used the words shut up. Did that occasion anybody rushing to the Speaker? Did that? No, let it be, let it be fair and candid to ourselves. You can't justify that by saying that he said shut up and that is what attracted that. The Speaker said so in plenary from the chair. Did it occasion anybody rushing to the Speaker? What is wrong is wrong. Don't attempt to justify it. What is wrong is wrong. And, Mr Speaker, I'll plead, I'll plead that we leave it here with a resolve that what happened was not the best. Let's all ensure that it doesn't ever have any further procreation in this house. Thank you very much.
Honorable Members, I, I really thought members were tired. But like, you have the spirit today to continue until tomorrow morning. My attention was actually drawn to what happened at the Committee of the Whole. I then, I then left and handed over to the first Deputy Speaker to reconstitute the House into a Committee of the Whole. I were just about to depart after sitting and presiding the whole day when two members of this House rushed to draw my attention to what was happening on the floor. And you saw me rush back and had to summon the leaders to my lobby to try to ascertain what happened. I've got different versions, but definitely I have my eyes and my ears here at all times. I have the men, I have the women here. And so, they are here. They are always here. So I always speak, I always speak. Oh, Jetro, Jetro is in charge. Jetro, no, Jetro is in charge of the table. Jetro is not part of my ears and my eyes. So I agreed, I agreed that I was going to intervene and to call all those involved for us to try to discuss, to settle this matter. This was at the Committee of the Whole. You have now elevated it to a plenary session. What I can do now is to direct that what has happened in this plenary session be not constitute part of the record of proceedings of today. It should not be captured by the official report. I will definitely, as I informed the first Deputy Speaker, I had earlier on informed the first Deputy Speaker that I will take up this matter and with him, we try to resolve the issues. I know the relationship between him and some of the members and he himself confided me about their relationship. So please, I'll invite you for us to discuss this privately and solve it. It's very important that there's amity between us and we continue to work together. So please, I'm aware of it. There's appropriate time to commend people when you do good. So don't worry, at the appropriate time, you'll be recognized. The fact that we are holding our important guests here hostage is a worry to me. They've been here since about a few minutes to one. They are not, they are not members of Parliament. We have given them assignments. They should come and assist us, but we should not hold them hostage. Particularly so as we don't have the, Honorable Members. You don't want me to end? We are, we are still trying, we are still trying to put the facilities in place to always at least warmly welcome and receive our guests. But we don't have that in place yet. It's part of the challenges the House is facing. So please, let's always be snappy when we invite witnesses and important guests. I want to end and please, I still see hands being thrown up and down from my right, from my left. And I know, I've noted the two who are doing that. The two of them, I've seen them, they are in front of me. Yeah, so please, I want to proceed to adjourn the sitting. And the sitting is accordingly adjourned tomorrow at 10:00 in the phone room. The House, after prompt, I don't know. The House is adjourned accordingly.